Welcome to your town meeting. Town Clerk informed me that we have met the quorum of fifty people at last count. I declare the 2018 Annual Town Meeting is now in session. To honor the work that our service members do for our country every day, our invocation will be read by Long Meadow resident with a long history of service, John Fitzgerald. John earned his bachelor's and master's degree from the University of Massachusetts. A resident since 1976, he retired as a history and social studies teacher at Long Meadow High School from 1971 to 2004 and served our town again with three year terms on the school committee from 2008 to 2017. He co-authored a book on the history of the Vietnam War. John served our country in the US Army from 1964 to 1968, leading service with the rank of captain and having been awarded the Bronze Star for Valor and the Purple Heart. John?
Okay, thank you Becky. Hold for a second. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right." And that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. But let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any differences we may have. Thank you.
The Boy Scouts may enter. Scouts, you may make proceed.
I'll tell you in just a minute. Oh, do you want to say the color guard? Okay, so...
I'll tell you what to do when I'm going to introduce you. Are you telephoning? Okay.
Okay. Color guard halt.
Thank you. I welcome the Western Mass Boy Scout Troop Ninety of Long Meadow Color Guard Nicholas Patron, a first-year student at Imago De Classical Academy, and Life Scout in Troop Ninety will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kindly remain standing and offer a moment of silence to both remember and honor veterans who have sacrificed for our country. Thank you. The National Anthem Star Spangled Banner shall now be performed by E. Cantore, directed by Scott Halligan. The students are Varsha Ethreya, Katie Feldman, Cal Nevoo, Anahita Nimbelkar, Isabella Nolfi Escobar, Bridget Olson, Aiman Porcello, Ethan Perrington, Ruby Shea, and Max Waslick.
[Music] Oh, say can you see why the dark earth behind was so brightly we hail? And if my eyes must be whose bright lights and bright stars through the peril must hide? For the land was we watched, but so gallantly streaming. And the rock is red, the water's deep, it has been through to the north, and the land was still there. Oh, say the stars are safe, oh, fair and way. For the land of the free, and the home of the dead.
Color guard advance. Color guard dismissed.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you. You may be seated. I welcome you to Town Meeting, our town's legislative body, and to any first-time voters, special welcome. Brief general announcements first. In the event of a fire alarm or other emergency, please note that the exits are clearly marked, both in the front here and in the back. Should you need any hearing assistive devices, inform a teller and someone will at the clerk's desk and will make sure you get one. Visitors are sitting in the designated visitors section to my left where the Boy Scouts are now going. Thank you. And should we need to hear from any non-voters with expertise or specialized knowledge of a project, I will permit some non-voters to speak, and these include town employees regarding issues relevant to their departments. And the following non-voters have received permission to speak: John Catlin and Mitchell Brecht. All department heads, directors, and the superintendent of schools may speak on matters related to their departments as well. The back of the warrant includes a list of the general procedures that we will follow. These rules come from the Mass General Laws, our town charter, our bylaws, and a book called Town Meeting Time. To speak, wait for recognition from me, the moderator, and then state your name and address. All remarks are addressed to me. All motions to limit or extend debate require a two-thirds majority, and as you know, our bylaws do require that if residents do want to stop debate, they can only move to do so after five have spoken in favor and five against at least. And the presumption is that these are speakers from the floor. So you see, there's three microphones in the center of the room and a center microphone here in the front for elected or appointed board members. If you wish to speak, line up at one of those microphones. If you are in favor of a motion, line up at the green microphone. If you are opposed to a motion, line up at the red microphone. If you have a question or if you'd like to make a motion, line up at the yellow microphone and we'll alternate among those. There is also no cross-examination, so if you are at the question microphone and you have four questions, ask them all at once because our bylaws do regulate how many times somebody can come and speak. Let's see. Comments from the center microphones are approximately two minutes, and all remarks should be concise and civil. We shall now turn to Tom Licusa for our awards ceremony.
Good evening and welcome to Town Meeting. There's two individuals I wanted to pay attention to this evening. One is, perhaps you've been watching television and seeing The Voice, and a student from our high school, Bryn Cartelli, is doing very well. She's actually singing this evening, and the Select Board would like to recognize her accomplishments and achievements, and so we're about 3,000 miles away from where she is, but if you'd be willing to give her a round of applause, maybe she'll hear it and it'll help with her performance. You know, we should be very proud of her, and she's a great example of a Long Meadow student, and we're getting some great national recognition, and so that's wonderful. The second individual is our Citizen of the Year, and so I have a letter here that I'm going to read, and then I'll ask our Citizen of the Year to come up, who was Mr. Jerry Nollet. So, "I endorse strongly the recommendation that Jerry Nollet be selected as Citizen of the Year for the town of Long Meadow. His contributions to the work of many town organizations and the results achieved by his sustained efforts speak clearly to his passion, service to our town. Jerry is an outstanding example of an individual who continuously strives to make Long Meadow a better place to be. Jerry Elaine and their family have resided in town since 1967. Over this time, he was a twelve-year member of the Select Board, starting in 1995, and chaired the Board for four of these years. He chaired the first capital planning committee, charged with effectively guiding and prioritizing the town's capital expenditures, was a member of the Finance Committee, the town's financial watchdog, worked as a member of Cynthia Solmer's Committee to develop the town's most recent long-range plan. He held the office of interim Town Clerk under Town Manager Robin Crosby. Currently participates in the development of the new senior center, a project which he helped initiate, was a member of the Planning Board under Walter Gunn. As a member of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Jerry was Long Meadow's liaison with that group. Just completed three years as a Town Register for Voters. He chaired the Long Meadow Community Television Board of Directors. Is active on the Cable Advisory Committee, was the past chair, and whose efforts, you know, helped encourage Comcast to support LTC TV television. He was also a member of the Ambulance Task Force and is a very popular veteran and goes to a lot of veterans' events in town, too. So I'd ask Jerry to step forward, please. Okay. So, for outstanding community service, the town of Long Meadow presented this day, the eighth day of May 2018. Would you like to say anything to the town? Yes, please.
Very briefly. I must say that there are no leakers in Long Meadow. This came as a complete surprise. Thank you so much for the honor. It's always been a pleasure to serve in our community and serve with many of you as well. So thank you for this honor, and thanks again.
I now recognize Stephen Crane for the Town Recognition List.
We're just going to put the names on the screen so folks can follow along, and sad to say, this is my first year needing glasses to read this. So I'll get started. So this is the part of the Town Meeting where we recognize people who have left community service either as town employees or as volunteers on boards and committees, and this is just a small measure of gratitude from Town Meeting, from the community, to them for their service. So from the Adult Center, Michael Squindo and Merrily Cradavell. From the Board of Assessors, Bob Leclerc. The Board of Health, Esther Mungin. The Building Department, Beverly Rose from the Department of Public Works. Dan McCarthy from the Library. Karen Cappenman and Carol Mazarino. From Parks and Rec Department, Olivia Azeltine. William I. Laura, Lauren Demain. Martha Farnsworth. Barbara Leonovich. Jared Mahoney. Paula Neves. Kelly Ziba. Brenda Carroll. Kathleen Brindle. Amber Badger. From the School Department, Charlotte Steele. Maureen Duke. Elizabeth Befoli. Marla Renius. Karen Rafferty. Susan Newton. Gail Zaguro. Deborah Wurzeniak. Kathleen Birdy. Heather Evyard. Maria Katoski. Krishna Longenecker. Susan D'Agostino. Michael Reineman. Travis Higa. Lynn Elficky. Thomas Hickey. Lori Benson. Sarah Cabral. Taylor Rye. Amy O'Connor. Francois Dupuis. Melissa Foal. Joshua Murphy. Jessica O'Malley. Joseph Riley. From the Treasurer Collector's Office, Yasmina Matreska. And our Veteran Service Director, Jesus Pereira. And those are the employees. From the Boards and Committees, the Audit Committee, Jeff Klotz. Glenn Rosenberg and Dan Healy. The Building Committee, Dave Appleman. From Community Preservations, Jim Jones. Conservation Commission, Sherri Knight. Cultural Council, Jean Maisiarz. Finance Committee, William Capelita. Housing Authority, Moira Murphy. Parks and Rec Commission, again, Jim Jones. Register of Voters, Stephen Kennedy. School Committee, Michelle Grodsky and Russell Dupree. Thank you. Thank you for their service.
And one other note of recognition, I've learned that Troop Ninety is going to be, so the Boy Scouts to my left, will be going to Normandy this summer to do a service project. They will do a flag ceremony, a wreath laying ceremony, and will clean the gravestones of the American soldiers who are buried in Normandy. So there's another, if you, yes, please. Thank you. It's just wonderful to recognize all of the people who are doing so much good for this town and for our country. We'll now get to business. Article one.
I move that the town vote to choose three trustees to administer the William Goldwaith Bequest that Don Barkman, Francis Smithon, and William McGurk be chosen as trustees.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in second, and you may speak to it.
Okay, the Goldwaith Bequest is an endowment fund left to the town of Long Meadow for the assistance to the worthy poor of Long Meadow. The Board of Trustees administers this fund and makes expenditures from an accruing interest for applicants experiencing financial hardship. The trustees are chosen annually.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All opposed, please raise your pink cards. The motion passes unanimously, unanimous affirmative vote. Article two.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $265,034 for the purposes of funding FY 2018 snow and ice removal deficit.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
The fiscal year 2018 snow and ice removal costs exceeded the $100,000 originally appropriated. The transfer would fully fund the costs of the fiscal year, and it's recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Licusa? Tom? Mr. Garrett would like to speak. Mr. Garrett?
I just wanted to inform the town that the Finance Committee voted on the original figure, which was 200...
Louder, please.
Excuse me. Sorry. The, just wanted to inform the residents that the Finance Committee voted on the original amount listed in the warrant, which was $250,000. The Finance Committee did not schedule a meeting tonight to vote on the increased amount of $265,034.
Any additional discussion? Is anyone seeking recognition? No, okay. Then we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, unanimous affirmative vote. Article three, Mr. Licusa.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $205,466 to the town's operational stabilization fund.
Louder, please. Right in the mic.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $205,466 to the town's operational stabilization fund previously established by the vote of Article Number Fifteen at the November eighteenth, 2003 Special Town Meeting.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in second, and you may speak to it.
Funds in the operational, an operational stabilization fund would secure the town's general reserve policy levels and help maintain the annual July first level of five to ten percent of operating revenues that the Select Board has established within its policy. It will also help to secure adequate levels of reserves where the Moody's Credit Rating Agency has stated that the town's reserve levels are below the national and state averages for the rating category of AA2.
Right in the microphone, Mr. Licusa. People in the back can't hear.
Okay. The July first, 2017, level was 6.49 percent. The anticipated July first, 2018, level is 6.27 percent, and this is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Mr. Garrett?
I just wanted to inform the residents of the town that the Finance Committee originally recommended the original number of $220,500. The Finance Committee did not schedule a meeting to vote on the lower amount of $205,466.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. The motion passes, unanimous affirmative vote. Article four, Mr. Licusa.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $50,000 for the purposes of conducting a streetlight feasibility study.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
The purpose of the streetlight feasibility study is to determine a cost-benefit analysis of the purchase and maintenance of any or all of the town's streetlights. It will also identify where the streetlights should be best placed and if replacement of the lighting heads should be considered in order to maximize the efficiency, and this is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? Any recommendation? Recommendation stands? Okay, then we'll turn to the person at the red microphone. You were there first, I believe. State your name and address.
Christopher Trotta, 37 Homecrest Street. I urge you all to note on this issue, currently there are seventeen firms licensed by the Commonwealth and endorsed by Western Mass Electric Eversource to perform this service for free. Not only will they perform the service for free, they will find state monies to pay down the cost of installation and replacement of new LED technologies. $50,000 is a waste of money to spend on a free service that the Commonwealth already provides us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink micro, pink voting cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink. Okay. The motion fails. Article five.
Article five. I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $50,000 for the purposes of supplementing the fiscal year 2018 police and fire department overtime budgets.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in second, and you may speak to it.
The fiscal year 2018 overtime budgets for both police and fires, snow, were reduced in the fiscal year 2018 town budget due to staffing assumptions regarding absences due to illness and/or injury. Both departments have experienced greater-than-expected absences and have led to the increased use of overtime to maintain staffing levels. The current fiscal year 2018 police department overtime budget is $244,000. An additional $20,000 is needed for the rest of the fiscal year. The current fiscal year 2018 fire department overtime budget is $210,000. An additional $30,000 is needed for the rest of this fiscal year, and it's recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. The motion passes, affirmative, majority affirmative vote. Article six, Mr. Licusa.
I move that the town vote to accept the provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and a half, in order to operate a stormwater enterprise fund.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
At the May tenth, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, the town voted to add Article Two, Chapter Six Hundred, Section Two dash six oh six, Stormwater Enterprise Fund, to the town bylaws establishing a stormwater division within the Department of Public Works. Acceptance of this statute will allow the fund to be accounted as an enterprise fund. As intended in the bylaw beginning July first, 2018, fiscal year 2019, an enterprise fund mainly requires that revenues and expenditures be accounted for separately outside of the town's general fund. Currently, the town operates three other funds in this manner: the sewer enterprise fund, the water enterprise, and solid waste and recycling enterprise funds.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article seven.
Move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? The motion's been made in second, and you may speak to it.
An annual operating budget must be adopted and funded for fiscal year 2019 that begins on July first, 2018. The budget was approved by the Select Board and reviewed by the Finance Committee as required by Town Charter. The budget as printed is a balanced budget as required by Massachusetts General Law and the Charter, and it's recommended by the Finance Committee.
Mr. Garrett?
Wanted to inform the residents of the town that the, one of the reasons that the Finance Committee is recommending this budget is because the budget meets the Finance Committee's recommendation that we did not reach our 2.5 statutory allowed levy, property tax levy limit increase. The Finance Committee has requested that in order to forestall the town's progress to reaching the $25 statutory hard cap. Because this budget met the Finance Committee's recommendation, the Finance Committee voted to recommend the current budget.
Thank you. I recognize Mr. Crane.
I know it's a little difficult to see with the lights on. We're going to dim the lights here, and they've gone to hit the switch to dim the light so we can see the presentation. So it's my pleasure to present to you the fiscal year 2019 Annual Town Budget for your consideration. annual town budget for your consideration. So a few of, just a little bit of background on the town's budget. And for some of you, this is a refresher. The towns, all municipalities in Massachusetts, the budget is really, are impacted by a state law known as Proposition Two and a Half. And there are really three constraints that are built into the law. You can't go up more than two and a half percent above prior year's levy limit. The levy limit cannot be greater than the levy ceiling, which is two and a half percent of the full and fair valuation of $25, which is about $25 per thousand mil rate. And then the maximum allowable limit includes debt and capital, and that would be on top of your levy ceiling. Six times in the last thirty-six years, town meeting has not raised taxes to the fullest. And you can see the years here. Some years, it was by a lot, and some years by a little. But one of the reasons why annually Long Meadow assesses the full two and a half percent increase is because costs to provide the same level of service in one fiscal year often go up more than two and a half percent for the next fiscal year. And it's actually been a credit to the town, to town meeting, the Select Board, the school committee, and town staff that they've been able to bring budgets to the town meeting that increase to two and a half percent when, again, costs escalate far beyond that in many cases. So the highlight of the, highlights of the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget is that if you approve the budget that is in the warrant, this will be the seventh time in thirty-six years that this has happened. So we do not use the full taxing capacity. We go up two point three percent out of two point five percent. And we maintain level services. That's about $94,000 less than we would be allowed to levy under Prop Two and a Half. And we have been able to do that and keep the budget balanced without using reserves. And that's, that's a key thing. The implementation of a stormwater enterprise fund that we just approved, well, the approval of the fee was last year, but the enterprise fund we just set up is one component, but that is also offset by increased stormwater management costs. The revenue generated by the fee will be about, it's $2.25 per house per month, and it'll be about $200,000 in revenue for the DPW. And then the, the great news this year is that there's a 10% increase in state aid. When we prepare the budget, we use the governor's budget proposal as our assumption for state revenue. And the reason why we do that is because the legislature approves their budget after we have to meet here at town meeting. And this year, the governor came out with some very favorable numbers for local aid. As you can, you can see on the screen, the governor's numbers represented a $422,000 increase over fiscal year eighteen. And, you know, we were thrilled. So we went forward with that. The House has approved the budget, and their numbers at, at the legislature are $586,000 higher than, than last, than fiscal year eighteen. So the state aid numbers are looking very favorable. That's one of the ingredients that enabled us to achieve this goal of not taxing to the full extent. I know you've all been waiting all year to see the pie charts. So here we are. Once again, the operating budget. It's about sixty-six and a half million dollars. And you can see, this is by function. The schools represent a little over half. The next largest line item is employee benefits and liability insurance. That's about nine and a half million. And then Public Works is the third largest item. And then you can see they go down from there. I think the thing you can appreciate is that when we say level service budget, it means the size of those slices don't change dramatically one year to the next. And that's why we're able to provide stable and balanced services to the community year in and year out. So where does the money go in terms of categories? As you can see, we are, I say this every year, we're in the people business. So salaries and benefits are substantially the greatest share of the budget. We also have expense line items that, I mean, there's a million different things that are expenses. I think you saw some, some detail of that in the warrant. And then debt service is about nine percent of our budget. We also carry fund balances in certain accounts. You can see these here. Free cash is about $572,000. Operational stabilization, operational stabilization fund, which we just put almost $260,000 into, has 3.3 million. Capital stabilization, $25,000. Water retained earnings, about a half million. Sewer retained earnings, about $900,000. Solid waste recycling, forty-two. And then ambulance, ambulance reserve, $41,000. So just to kind of a snapshot of the, of where things moved on the budget from last year to this year. General government, about 2.6%. Public safety, increased about 2.4%. Planning and community development went down 4.8. That looks like a big decrease, but it's a very small budget, and it really relates to employee attrition. And so that made a big difference on that line item. But like I said, it's really related to an employee, a longstanding employee retiring. The schools go about 2%. Public Works goes down 11%, but again, that is partially offset by the stormwater utility fee being implemented effective July first. We also have community services, which go about 2.9%. Debt service, about six and a half percent increase. And then employee benefits, about 7.2. And the employee benefits, I'm sure as you all know, goes up well beyond 2% and is a big driver of our budget. And so we continue to work hard to lower those costs each year and find ways to absorb those increases without having to cut core services. So that's, that's the presentation. If, and I welcome any questions.
Any discussion on our article, the motion under Article seven? Could the lights be turned back on, please? What's that? Well, I'm gonna call a vote, and I'd prefer to call the vote with all the lights on. Sorry for the delay, folks. I don't wanna call a vote in the dark. What's that? Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. The motion passes. Unanimous affirmative vote. Article eight.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $33,150 to a salary settlement account to fund approved collective bargaining and wage settlements.
Is there a second? Thank you. You may speak to it.
The town currently has one collective bargaining unit whose term expires June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. This article will provide funds to approve, approved wage and collective bargaining agreements. Funds from the salary settlement account can be released to the individual budgetary line items by the Finance Director only after receipt of finalized collective bargaining and wage settlement documents. This appropriation would cover the wages for fiscal year nineteen only once agreements are finalized. And it was recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Article nine, Mr. Lowe.
I move in terms of the article.
There's, but motion's been made. You've been seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Lowe.
Annually, the town appropriates funds for capital expenditures. Given the extensive list of capital needs, the Select Board increased its fiscal year two thousand and nineteen allocation by an additional point two five percent to three percent of general fund revenues less debt exclusion taxation as allotted for in their capital funding policy.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes by two-thirds declaration. Affirmative vote. Article ten, Mr. Lowe.
I move that the town vote to authorize the treasury to borrow the sum of $520,000 for the purposes of repairing the Morningside Drive culvert and related bonding costs.
But, the motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Lowe.
This article authorizes debt to finance the repair of the Morningside Drive culvert. The existing thirty-six inch diameter corrugated pipe under Morningside Drive has begun to collapse. The pipe failure has caused sinkholes in the tree belt and has undermined the drainage system. This project will replace the existing pipe with a new thirty-six inch corrugated pipe and replace the adjacent drainage infrastructure.
Any further discussion? This also requires a two-thirds vote in the case of borrowing. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Unanimous affirmative vote. That's declaration, two-thirds majority. Article eleven, Mr. Lowe.
I move that the town vote to authorize the treasury to borrow the sum of $123,000 for the purposes of.
Excuse me, Mr. Lowe. Could you just correct that to treasurer, please? You said treasury.
Oh, sorry. I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow, borrow the sum of $123,000 for the purposes of replacing water mains on Kingsbury Road and related bonding costs to be paid in the first instance from water receipts.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
This article authorizes debt to finance the replacement of water mains on Kingsbury Road. The project was recommended by the tie-in bond water system evaluation. The four inch water main on Kingsbury Road needs to be replaced with an eight inch water main to improve water quality and increase flow volume for fire protection.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. The motion passes. Unanimous affirmative vote by declaration. Article twelve, Mr. Lowe.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $5,378.04 from the Edgewood Water Main's account, $7,110 from the Forest Glen Pump Station account, from the Sunset Lane Water Main's account, and to authorize the treasurer to borrow the sum of $104,100 for the purposes of replacing water mains on Farmerly Road and related bonding costs to be paid in the first instance from water receipts.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The Farmerly Road Water Main Replacement Project is expected to cost $126,050. This project was recommended by a tie-in bond water system evaluation. The four inch water main on Farmerly Road needs to be replaced with an eight inch water main to improve water quality and increase flow volume for fire protection. Transfers are being made from unexpended funds in prior bond authorizations, which can only be used for water projects that have an equal or longer, longer debt service authorization, which the Farmerly Road Water Main Replacement Project would. The remaining balance would be funded through a debt authorization.
Any further discussion? This requires a two-thirds majority vote in the case of borrowing. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Majority, unanimous majority affirmative vote. Yes, sir, at the yellow microphone?
Matt Friedman, two forty-seven Inverness Lane. Madam Moderator, I'd like to propose moving one of the articles a little closer. I anticipate that Article fourteen.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Make the motion. You can make the motion.
I.
And then you can speak to it.
I move that Article thirty-four be moved up to follow Article fourteen to come between Article fourteen and Article fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Friedman.
I just feel that, of course, Article fourteen, the senior center is going to generate quite a bit of discussion. And I think Article thirty-four, which is a proposal about plastic bag use, is also one that will create a lot of discussion. And I don't think it should be saved to last. So I'm proposing it be moved up after Article fourteen.
This motion is debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority. Is there any further discussion on the motion to advance Article thirty-four after Article fourteen and before Article fifteen? Seeing none, then we'll come directly to a vote on the motion to advance Article thirty-four to the spot between Article fourteen and Article fifteen. Again, this requires a two-thirds majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes by two-thirds declaration. So what this means, folks, is that after Article fourteen, I will turn directly to Article thirty-four. Just give me one moment. Okay, hold on. Let me just get that settled. One moment, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Lowe, I recognize you for Article thirteen.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $12,033.79 from the Colton Place Sewer Lines account, $85.43 from the Maple Road Sewer Lines account, from the Ellington Road Sewer Lines account, and from sewer retained earnings, the sum of $177,732.31 for the purposes of replacing sewer lines on Western Drive.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The Western Drive Sewer Line Project is expected to cost $202,000. The proposed work replaces the existing eight inch clay sewer line with a new eight inch PVC pipe, new manhole structures, and new service connections to the tree belts. The existing line has been video inspected and found to have significant root infiltration, which continues to cause sewer backups. Transfers are being made from unexpended funds in prior sewer bond authorizations, which can only be used for sewer projects that will have an equal or longer debt authorization, which the Western Drive Project would. The remaining balance would come from the sewer retained earnings account, which as of April thirtieth had a balance of $902,985.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes. Unanimous affirmative vote. Article fourteen. I'm sorry, there's somebody at the yellow mic?
Madam Moderator.
Yes?
I'm Roger Wojcik, twenty-nine Burns Medal.
Can't hear you. Speak directly into the mic.
Here we go. Cam Roger Wojcik, twenty-nine Burns Medal. I move to dismiss Article thirty-two from consideration in this evening's annual town meeting.
Okay. This is a motion that can be made at any time. We can do this now. Hold on one moment. No, we can't do this now. We have to- I'm sorry, Mr. Wojcik, we can't do this now. We have to wait. We have not advanced the article, so we have to wait until we take it up into the normal course of procedure.
Thank you.
I apologize for my initial error. Mr. Wojcik, we could entertain a motion to advance it in order to dismiss it, if you'd like to do that. Oh, okay.
Article 32 is one I wish to dismiss.
Mr. Wojcik, if you'd like to make a motion to advance Article 32 now, you can do that. We'll vote on that, and then you can make the motion to dismiss.
So if we advance it, I can position it to dismiss it?
Correct.
Oh, okay. In that case, Madam Moderator, I make a motion to advance Article 32 to the current position.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Wojcik.
Now, can I speak to dismiss it?
No, you can speak to advancing it. But if you have no speech, then we'll just get directly on with the vote.
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay. So, the motion is to advance Article 32 to the current position. There's been a second. It requires a two-thirds majority affirmative vote to pass. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. The motion passes by two-thirds declaration. Mr. Wojcik, Article 32.
Okay. Madam Moderator, I move to dismiss Article 32 from further consideration at this annual town meeting.
Is there a second? Somebody seconded it. Yes. It's a motion to take no action. Could you please rephrase it to a motion to take no action, instead of a motion to dismiss?
Okay. Ready?
I'm- yes, ready.
Okay. Madam Moderator, I move to take no action on Article 32 at this annual town meeting.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Wojcik. Do you want to tell the people why you want to-
No, the article simply has no value to be approved or disapproved at this point in time.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
If we go back to-
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Christopher Trotta, 37 Homecrest Street. If we go back to Article 7, we appropriate $34,344,236 for the school committee. If we go to Article, I'm sorry, was it 32?
We're on Article 32.
32. Folks, 62 and older with zero children in the school system are asking for $1,000 to flush their fire hydrants. Why are we tabling this?
Okay, so-
Vote yes!
So, all right. So, Mr. Wojcik, are you the lead petitioner on this article?
No, I stand at my position.
And so, it's my understanding that as the lead petitioner for this article, you seek to withdraw it from consideration at this current town meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. So that is the motion that is under consideration at this point in time?
Yeah. I could talk for five minutes as to why it's not appropriate, but I don't want to waste the time of the town meeting attendees.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll come directly to a vote on a motion to take no action on Article 32. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. The motion passes majority affirmative vote. The motion- okay, you're all set. We now turn to Article 14. Mr. Lo.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $14 million for the purposes of constructing and furnishing a new council on aging facility, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer is authorized to borrow said sum of money, and provided further that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on tax imposed by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Lo.
The article would appropriate $14 million for the construction and furnishing of a new council on aging facility. This approval is contingent on a subsequent affirmation vote of a debt exclusion vote by the voters of the town of Long Meadow.
Mr. Garrett, are you standing to be recognized? Mr. Garrett? Is the Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee has voted to recommend Article 14. What I wanted to inform the residents of the town is the Finance Committee had an extensive discussion with numerous residents of the town that came to the Finance Committee's meeting to speak in favor of this article. One of the things that the Finance Committee has been focused on this particular budgetary cycle is the levy limit and preventing and establishing a pathway towards sustainable fiscal policy, as was recommended by our local legislators. One of the things that we were assured of by the town's chief financial officer is that the proposed adult center does not impact the levy limit, so that was not- that was one of the concerns, and so that was not part of our consideration. We were assured, again, that this is not going to affect the levy limit. My understanding from the town fiscal officer is that this represents roughly an average of $170 annual increase in taxes to the average resident. Again, that is going to vary dramatically between depending on the person's property value. But the Finance Committee has been engaged with different departments for a number of years to advance three major projects, the first of which everyone agreed was to be the Department of Public Works facility, which has moved forward, the second of which was the senior center, adult center project, and we're at the next step in this process. Another step would be for it to be brought to a ballot vote. And the third project, of course, is the school, the middle school project that has- that's in its stages of advancement. Based on that, based on this reflection of the plan, and based on the Finance Committee's prior position whereby we voted against the $250,000, I believe, thousand dollars that was requested to conduct the study on the plan for the senior center, based on the representation that we received, that the plan that was in place at the time was not favored by the seniors. We've now been given a plan that the seniors have indicated to us that they do favor, and so it was important to support this plan. That being said, it was a lengthy discussion. It was not without controversy. The Finance Committee was split in our vote, but ultimately, we did vote to recommend this article.
Is Ms. Bergeron available? I am going to recognize Mary Beth Bergeron and John Catlin, who will be making a presentation. Ms. Bergeron?
My name is Mary Beth Bergeron. I live at 497 Inverness Lane. I have been a town resident for 43 years. I am the chairman of the newly formed Permanent Building Committee for our town. That committee was started right after the May 2017 town meeting. As per the charge from the Select Board, the composition of the committee is comprised primarily of people who are engaged in the construction business and/or have experience in the design or construction of municipal buildings. The function and duties of our committee, as charged by the Select Board, are to advise the town manager and the Select Board of the future needs of town buildings, and to review and comment on capital projects relating to the town, including the schools. The committee also serves as a design review committee and reviews new construction and renovations of town buildings. At last year's town meeting and subsequent town election, the town approved the funding of a new DPW. I'm pleased to inform you that great progress has been made on the DPW. Most recently, the town received the bids for the construction of the facility. Together with the OPM, Weston and Sampson, and the strong leadership of our town manager, that project is proceeding at an appropriate pace and quite possibly at significantly less cost than previously anticipated. At the 2017 town meeting, the residents overwhelmingly approved $250,000 for the purpose of architectural and design studies for a new adult center at Greenwood Park. Out of the four town meetings that we have had this project on the table, this is as far as this town has come. Per our charge, we moved forward with the selection of an architect for a new adult and community center at Greenwood Park, having identified that a new facility was needed for our elders, and that the town's population would benefit from additional sports facilities. Together with the Park and Rec Department and the Council on Aging Directors, they assisted us in identifying the needs for our sports programs as well as for our senior residents. I'd like to now show you the plan. I think a lot of you have seen it, but a lot of you may not have. I know a lot of you have been to the senior center, but I also know through the course of the last many months that many of you have never stepped foot in the senior center. So we're going to start with some great plans.
Yep. Right in the microphone, please. Are the lights going to be turned down? Okay, thank you. It's going to happen.
This is the bird's eye view of Greenwood Park. You can see on the right-hand side, you are looking at it from the south. Normally during construction, you look at things from the street view, but we are not. We are looking at a bird's eye view. You see the southern end down here where the sunshines are. That's where the southern exposure is. That's also the state line with Connecticut. The right-hand side has the existing senior center. That is a little deceptive. That circle is a little larger than what the senior center currently occupies. There is a tennis court at the front of the property. It is in poor condition. We have parking in the front for Greenwood Park's in-ground swimming pool. There are two softball fields. The softball fields, the outfield's overlap each other and cannot be used at the same time. Those fields, per the Park Department, are used primarily by out-of-town leagues and not by our residents. Next one. This is the warm and welcoming exterior of our current senior center. It is the wing of an old school. The original entrance was in the center, where the children would be welcomed as they came in the door. Now, the entrance is on that side of the wing. And next slide, please. This is what most senior center entries look like. There's an appropriate drop-off area, so that those people who might be handicapped will be able to get into the facility more easily. Next slide, please. This is what you see when you walk in the door. It looks like a hospital or a nursing home. Next slide, please. This is the Holyoke Senior Center's welcoming area. This is what should be for our senior residents. Next slide, please. This is the office of the director and the social service coordinator for our town. You'll notice that there is a sign-up, that this is not a confidential area. There are signs up in a number of areas in our senior center: the veterans' agent, the town nurse, the social services coordinator, and the director. So when you need to go in and speak to any of them on any issue, you better watch your mouth, if you don't want your private business shared with other people who are walking about. It's simply inappropriate. Next slide, please. This is what a reception area should look like, so that when you walk in the door, someone's there to greet you, someone to say hello, a sign-up to tell you where the program is that you have come to the senior center for. Next slide, please. This is the men's room. It's the only time I've been in the room, by the way, was to take this picture. You can immediately see that if you were in a wheelchair or were a large person with a wider walker, it would be a little difficult to navigate the hallway. For the men and the urinals, it might be a little difficult to navigate the urinals when they're four inches off the floor. They're great for kids. The school was built for children K through five. It was not built for grown men. It's a little inappropriate. Next slide, please. This is what it should look like. This is what we're looking for. Next slide, please. The toilets. I bet it's not often you talk about toilets at town meeting. On the right-hand side is an existing toilet at the senior center. It is a child-height toilet, great for K through five, but if you're a grown adult, it is a little difficult, particularly if you've got weak knees or weak hips, to get up off of it. You'll also notice there are no bars to help you get up. Next slide. On the left, by the way, that's the nice one, the right height. This is the multipurpose room. It is a very clean, active room. You will notice that it does not have- the building does not have central air conditioning, and for senior residents, that is truly an important part of being healthy. Senior people have a harder time regulating their body temperatures and extreme temperature, so if it's very hot out, it's difficult for them to cool down, and if it's very cold out, it's hard for them to warm up. There's wonderful air conditioners, room air conditioners in there. You turn them on, and people can't hear. Next slide, please. This is what a multipurpose room should look like. Next slide, please. This is our fitness room. It doubles as a game room. There's a few machines in there, and you can see people do use them. On the left side is a billiards table that you can- you can play billiards, but your cue is going to hit the back wall. The ping-pong table is not really usable unless you like to stand up really close to the ping-pong table, because you can't back up. And once a month, they cut toenails in there. Next slide, please. I'm telling the truth! The pictures don't lie. Up here, you'll see the fitness room. That should be. There should be a floor for dance classes, for yoga, for all of those kinds of things that active, engaged, energetic, intelligent, moving seniors need to be doing, because if we stop moving, we stop moving. Next slide, please. Now, I have to introduce to you the architect. We hired an architect that is par excellence when it comes to senior centers. John Catlin of Catlin and Petrovic Architects has 30 years of experience in designing senior centers. He has designed 46 senior centers in Massachusetts alone. He is nationally recognized architect for senior centers. This is the guy we wanted. He's a great guy that has come up with a great plan for us. John Catlin.
Thank you. I'm always a bit embarrassed when she introduces me. I'm an architect. I'm going to walk you through quickly, because I know our time is limited, but I wanted to talk a little bit about placing the building on the site. What's critical here is that the southern, as Mary Beth mentioned, the southern side of the site is where we're orienting our building. We've placed parking- We've placed parking on the north side, and we've buffered it from the street, Maple Road, with plantings, and we've pulled it down so there's about 110 spaces here supplemented by this parking over here. There's now parking adjacent to the pool, too. You would enter the building, I mean, enter the site. Oops, there it is. You enter on that side, enter on the other. I pushed too many buttons. You see the blue is for pedestrian access onto the site, both into the youth center as well as over to the pool side. Those are kept completely separate from the, from the vehicle movement. Come on, baby. Oops. This shows, I wanted to circle the red. This is the program that we developed with the community. The red stands for program spaces, what the senior center is all about. So when you see the red colors here, those are program spaces. And the building is really divided up into three areas. One is this one up in the corner, which is the nurse, the food pantry, and the Veterans Agent. This needs to be accessed from the exterior as well from the interior of the building so they have their own entrance. The senior center, which is this large circle area, the adult center, is for adult use from about nine till three or four in the afternoon. It has facilities that are available for other uses after hours. The gymnasium is a shared space, both for the community as well as for the seniors or the adults. And it's been worked out with recreation and with a number of organizations around the community that would like to be able to use this. This is available during the summer for summer camp use, especially during inclement weather. It's a full-regulation basketball court, which is missing in town, and it was, it's part of this whole program. On the second level, we have the game room here, the fitness facility here, but what's unique about the gym is that we also have a raised walking or running track, which can be used both by older adults for walking as well as younger, younger people for inclement weather practice and, and exercise. Up here are two classrooms. One has a residential kitchen to provide the opportunity for learning about cooking as you get older. These are some of the examples of how the spaces would work. The stair, reading areas, quiet areas, a café, a lounge library area for conversation. I always like to emphasize really three key things that a community center like this does for the older adults. It's for socialization, engaging yourself with others in the community. It's for nutrition through a meal site, and for education of how to eat properly, and it's for exercise. All the new senior centers now are being built with full fitness facilities. It's really key that we exercise as we age. If we do all three of those things, we're going to age healthy and stay in our homes. This is a typical game area with cards and billiards, very active area, very busy. This is an example of, the gymnasium set up to have indoor pickleball courts. I didn't really mention earlier about the site, but on the site, there are two outdoor pickleball courts, and there's, and we can have them on the inside, too. The gymnasium would have an indoor walking area, as seen here. This happens to be a volleyball game going on with, with older folks. There's a lot of different exercise opportunities in this project. Here's what our gymnasium may look like. You can see that there's a lot of transparency to connect to the outdoors. There's outdoor soccer fields out here. There's a walking track above, and in this case, there's some young children playing a ball. This community is a very traditional community. It has a lot of character. Part of the goal of this project is to give it that sense of Long Meadow in terms of a colonial feel to it. This is the main entrance with a drop-off. There's a covered area for seating. There's also an outdoor area for sitting outside the café. And this is the entrance into the offices that are other town offices. The gymnasium is on this side with its own entrance. At the rear of the building, which faces south and faces the playfields and the pickleball courts, it also has an outdoor area. There's a performance stage in the multipurpose room, and it can be reversed in the summer for outdoor opportunities. Mary Beth is going to cover the next three slides.
We're sort of a medium-sized town in western Massachusetts. We have currently 15,475 residents. Residents over the age of 60, we have 4,509. That is a staggering number. In addition to that, there are 2,606, this number's not up there, 2,606 people who are between the ages of 50 and 60. We are the Baby Boomers. We are a gigantic force, and we are skewing our town to the town's benefit. We represent today 29% of the population. That's huge. The state average for a municipal, for a municipality is 11%. You often hear the rumor, people buy here, educate their children, and leave. Well, that's obviously not the case. We buy and stay, and why do we stay? We stay because we have a great quality of life here in Long Meadow. We have great access to north, southeast, and west transportation. We have an airport that is 20 minutes away. We have a beautiful town. We have a wonderful fire and police department. We have great schools. It is a great place to live. Next slide, please. The Finance Department, or Maury kind of went through some of this, but per the Finance Department, the average cost of this facility is going to be 48 cents per thousand dollars of assessment on your home. The average home is assessed at a little bit less than $350,000. The borrowing for this project, because it will be a debt override, will not affect the town's debt management policy. The project funding will not have an effect on the Moody or Standard and Poor rating for the town. The average home value is $350,000 times 48 cents. It'll cost you $168 a year if you own the average home. That's $42 a tax bill. Frankly, I don't think you'll notice it for such a great facility. Next slide, please. Per the School Department, the average cost to educate a child in our town is $15,248.55. The average number of children per family is 1.85. The cost to educate that 1.85 children, K through 12, is $338,517. The average home assessment is 350. Your tax bill is 85.15. The length of time for Long Meadow to recover the cost of educating 1.85 children is 30.75 years. Now, I've lived here 43 years. I can tell you, I paid for my child, children's education through paying my taxes. Let me give you an example, though. I live in a four-bedroom house. I pay approximately $10,000 a year in taxes. I am not, the town is not paying to educate any of my children. If I decide to sell my home, who's buying it? People with children. It's going to cost the town over $30,000 a year to educate a family who moves in with two children. We are cheap. We need to keep our seniors here because they need to keep paying the taxes to help pay the school system for the school budget. It's important. And if it's important, then we need to keep the seniors in our town. We need this new facility. Next slide. Or is that it? That is it.
I will just say a couple.
All right. Thank you. All right. It's, it's been over time. It's now open for discussion. We'll have the lights turned back on.
We lost, we lost the last slide. That's okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Catlin. Are you all set?
I'm just going to say one last thing.
Real quick.
One last slide is supposed to come up. I'll let it go. Thank you so much for this honor.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. All right. The floor is open for discussion. And we'll alternate, thank you for the lights. We'll alternate among the different microphones. If there's anybody at different microphones. Is that Mr. Nollet? Let me actually go to the person who's got a question first, and then we'll go, because we just heard a lot in favor. Let's start with the yellow microphone.
Julia Moulton, 36 River View Avenue.
Right in the microphone, please. Somebody to help her adjust. Thank you. Julia Moulton.
Julia Moulton, 36 River View Avenue.
You may ask a question.
If this project is voted on favorably this evening, passes...
Right into the, could you speak right into it?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
If this project passes this evening, how soon could we start construction?
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Or is that it? Okay.
Because this is a public construction project regulated by Chapter 149, we would probably be looking on the same, a similar timeline to the DPW, which is, Mary Beth noted, we did open our bids a few weeks ago, and we did get very favorable bids, so that that project is so far coming well under budget. About a year or so is some design work that needs to happen here as well, but I guess about a year, maybe 18 months to start construction.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. We'll turn to the person at the red microphone, and then we'll start again, move that way. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Shelley Pleat, 276 Deepwoods Drive.
Right into the microphone. Just put your mouth right up there.
I can honestly say I am not against the senior center. What I am against is its scope. I feel at this point, when we have so many projects waiting, that we need to reconsider this project on a smaller scale. This morning, in the Republican, was an article about the new South Hadley Town Senior Center. The town is larger than ours, and they proposed a $9.8 million structure. I think we really need to think about our scope and reducing it. Thank you.
Thank you. At the green microphone. And if we could avoid doing the clapping, it'll save time. Thank you so much. Mr. Nollet.
Madam Moderator and friends, Jerry Nollet, 724 Frank Smith Road. We've come a long way in the last five years, and many have struggled to bring this matter to you, the Long Meadow residents and the legislature. We've already invested $250,000 at our last meeting, and now need your approval to finalize this active process. We are all growing up in this beautiful community, and 40% or better are over 50. We have so much, and all of you have worked hard to earn it. The police, fire, schools, parks, DPW are all the envy of most Massachusetts communities of our size. I love Long Meadow. The ambulance service is a wonder. My wife took a trip three weeks ago today at 2:30. We called the ambulance, and they showed up at our house in less than five minutes. Not only showed up, but with a paramedic onboard. We have 19 professional firemen in this community. 14 of those are paramedics. We are the envy, but you know what? You all have earned it. Now is the time to approve this article for our older residents that have few champions and historically have asked for little, but now desperately need your support to replace an existing facility which is shamefully inadequate. Please, vote yes for this article to build a new community center, and now includes a gymnasium which will serve both young and old alike. It is now your opportunity to support those that have made Long Meadow what it is. It is a jewel of a community made of caring, conservative patriots. I ask you, my friends, to overwhelmingly support this article, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr., excuse me, the next person at the yellow microphone.
My name is Taro Wong, and I live at 292 Pinewood Drive. I have a question about access to the multi-levels of this structure. Will there, will there be ramps, elevators? How do you get from the ground floor to the second level or the lap over? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
Thank you. As, as the architect, John Catlin, laid out, the, the plan that we're looking at, which is based on many of the senior centers he's designed, include wide staircases that are approachable and help increase mobility, but then there will also be an elevator in the facility as well.
Is there the red microphone?
John White, 245 Maple Road. Although I'm in the opposition line, may I congratulate Mary Beth Bergeron for her tireless efforts in working on the senior center. I don't think anyone here is really opposed to an updated, modern adult center built in the right location. However, respectfully, I don't think the current proposal is the answer for two reasons. First is the cost of it, $14 million, and secondly, its location. $14 million, it seems like a lot of money. As I understand it, a significant portion of this cost is the addition of a full-size gymnasium. The gym, in terms of its volume, would be used mostly by Park and Rec as a community center for after-school and evening programs. To me, this is the rub. Why can't our town government bring itself to advocate for just a senior center for seniors? I think that's what the seniors really want, is a senior center for them. They're currently sharing the building with Park and Rec. Building this gym with the new senior center as is proposed is going to continue sharing with Park and Rec. If a new full-size gym is thought to be needed for the town, in addition to what I believe are the eight gymnasiums that already exist here, I would think this would be brought up as a separate measure. It seems somewhat ironic that if this article is approved, the seniors will end up paying additional property taxes for a community gymnasium, all in the name of a $14 million senior center. Thank you.
Okay. Now, the green microphone.
Elizabeth Barron, 102 River View Ave. First of all, I'd like to thank Mary Beth Bergeron for your dedication, passion, and long-term effort in bringing this building project to our town for consideration. I know all too well the personal sacrifice it takes to promote and educate the town on these types of projects, and I'm grateful for community members like you who do this important work. When I look at this particular project, I'm struck by several things that really excite me about this building. First, the ability to take a design and really allow it to become a community space is so important. The indoor walking track, the gym, the café, and all the meeting rooms all have the potential to be used by all of our residents, young and old. The additional playing fields outside are a much-needed addition to our town, but more importantly, this building breathes life into our adult senior community, which I believe is largely underserved in this town. The design allows for our senior population to be engaged in various activities throughout the day in an environment conducive to maintaining friendships, friendships, but also cultivating new ones. I believe the benefits go well beyond the space itself to offer our adult population a sense of belonging and a way to be actively engaged with younger members of our community. This project is visionary, and it allows us to move forward as a community where we value each other. It's what I want my town to be, and it's where many parents my age hope to retire. We've been talking for years about being built out and needing to find additional residential housing. for years about being built out and needing to find additional revenue streams. Why not invest in this adult center as a potential to rent out that gym and function rooms from time to time to do what we can to bring money into our town? Let's be creative while we also allow for our aging population to maintain their health and wellness, stay active, and engage with other community age groups. That's a win-win, in my opinion, where I feel the benefits strongly outweigh the costs of such an investment. Please vote yes tonight and invest in the future of Long Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you. At the yellow microphone, please.
Elizabeth Tyson, 108 Maple Road here in town. I have a question. I had heard that the bids came in for the DPW and that there will be a savings of $2 million if the construction runs smoothly, and I wonder if you could confirm and clarify that, please?
Do you have any other questions that you'd like to ask?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crane?
The bids did come back under budget around $2 million, but again, it's, that's, if construction goes smoothly, then there would be project savings, but we won't really know that probably for another year. But the first step is very good news.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
At the red microphone, please.
Barbara Winnig, 139 Maple Road. And I too agree with the need for a new senior center, but what I don't agree with is the location. Greenwood Park is about nine acres, making it the smallest park in town. It houses a pool, a playground, tennis courts, ballfield, basketball hoop and woods, and an old elementary school which is being used for the daycare center and the current senior center. That leaves less than five acres of open area and it's the only open green space at the south end of town. The proposed building area and parking lot will take up most of that open space. When Greenwood Park was originally mentioned as an alternate site for the new adult center, most people thought it meant using the existing structure and footprint, not a massive new building with an auditorium, full gymnasium, and new parking lot. Once built, the only open green space will be a small soccer field at the back of the building. I assume most residents know the saga of past efforts to cite the adult center, and the Greenwood Park choice is definitely the location of last resort, or as some have said, the place that we're stuck with. We shouldn't be spending $14 million to put the adult center in the location of last resort or what we're stuck with. We shouldn't be spending $14 million to obliterate the only open green space at the south end of town. Thank you.
Thank you. At the green microphone, please. Name and address.
Peter Landon, 5 Meadowbrook Road. As we're hearing, some folks have a concern about their wallets here tonight, and I'm here to talk about that as well and social equity for the 4,500 current seniors. I believe basically that up-to-date facilities for recreation, education, or senior services are necessary to hold up Long Meadow real estate values and in case, in the case tonight, a payback to our seniors. They're investments with a look to the future attractiveness of the town and are absolutely necessary to support future real estate values. The debate for an adult center has gone on for decades while a number of seniors have gone from 17% to 30% of the town's population, and by 2028, 45% of our 15,000-odd residents will be over 60 years old. I said that 45% of 15,000 residents will be seniors in 10 years. In the last few years, the town meetings have rejected the adult center proposals for Turner Park and Bliss Park locations. The arguments were mostly about the location and not the plan or the need. Tonight is a test of sorts. Ironically, in the last decade, 2008 to 2017, our school-age population has gone down from 3,100 to 2,800 students, a decrease of 10%. Meanwhile, let's look at the relative spending for education as compared to services. Of the $66 million annual town budget approved tonight, we spent $156,000 on the operating budget for our current 4,509 seniors and $38 million on educating our 2,800 children's education. No bonded debtors is on our books for senior facilities and most of our current $46 million in bonds outstanding are for education. If you were thinking this is not a neat apples-to-apples comparison, you're right, but the facts are irrefutable. $156,000 annual budget at the current senior center and $38 million for education. The obvious economic-financial imbalance is compounded by the fact that seniors pay the same real estate taxes with no senior discounts. It's easy for young families to pack a town meeting, but very difficult for seniors. We all need to be their voice here tonight with a two-thirds vote. Please vote yes.
Next, at the yellow microphone, please.
Hello, I'm Pat Jorzac, 361 Frank Smith Road. My question is, I have heard that there are grants available for senior centers. Can you clarify? Also, I understand there will be a private fundraising. Can you clarify for that as well?
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
There are grants out there for projects like this. They're not automatic, I would say. I mean, I think the biggest thing is if the community doesn't show its commitment to the project, you are very unlikely to get a grant. Many grants are tied to community income levels and things like that. We will, and then other things, some of them have utilization strings attached. So, if you say, you know, we want a grant to do X, then you have to do that function and it eliminates your flexibility a little bit. We have been exploring grant opportunities. We've been working with the legislative delegation to make sure we lower the overall cost to local taxpayers, but the first step has to be the community's commitment to the project. I can't speak directly to the fundraising, fundraising other than I do know that Friends groups and things like that are, I think, mobilizing to do that. Again, I think if the community shows its support for the project, you'll see that fundraising effort ramp up significantly.
Can I ask one more question?
One follow-up, yes.
Do we have any guest estimates as to what these grants could amount to dollar-wise?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you. At the red microphone, please.
Ruth Moxom, 185 Maple Road. First of all, I want to say I really do appreciate the hard work of our committee, building committees, and I do support a new center. However, ah, you have to be, okay, it's meant for six-foot people. However, I'm...
Speak right into the microphone.
Yeah, I live adjacent to the park and just like everyone else, not in my backyard. Now, we, my family moved here when, in 1979, when my daughter was four years old. We chose our home because we were near a park and a school. Our daughter attended Greenwood School for only one year. Before it was closed, the 16-year-old school was closed in 1982. Our neighborhood was filled with young families like us, whose children played in the park, attended summer camp, and learned to swim in the Greenwood pool. On weekends, we heard the sounds of groups playing softball in the fields. We're a close-knit neighborhood and throughout the year, countless neighbors passed by and waved on the way to the park to let the children play, walk their dogs, swim in the pool, and simply enjoy the serene woodland of this quiet park for their walks. Today, our neighborhood has changed again and a new generation of young families has moved in and the children now enjoy the park as we once did. A new center will occupy three acres of that meager park where exists already a poolhouse, a modest children's playground, and a softball field. Greenwood is the smallest park in town and, which will leave our children and neighbors with only a few acres if a center is built. The parking lot and exit will be on the right-hand side of the park, adjacent to a neighbor's home. There will be a driveway and a parking lot. How would you feel if that were your home? I worry about the safety of the children who undoubtedly will use that area when they enter the park, and drivers may not see nor will they be able to stop to avoid hitting young children.
Ms. Moxom, could you come to the conclusion, please?
Maple Road is a very busy street with, and no traffic studies have ever been done to address the issues of both the daycare and current senior center traffic currently entering and leaving the park. A new center will double the amount of traffic and the increasing probability of accidents will require a crossing guard for many more hours than we presently have.
Ms. Moxom, I ask you to come to the conclusion, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our young families deserve to have this tiny park preserved for their children to enjoy much the same as we did and families in other parts of the town enjoy as well. I do again, support the senior center, but I feel that a more central, accessible location is, should be in town and our seniors deserve the best center we can possibly build and I thank you.
Thank you. Next, at the green microphone.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, there's no calling from the floor. We speak at the microphone when recognized. Mr. Starr?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I feel like this is an Alcoholics Anonymous meeting. I'm Larry Starr and I'm a senior. I live at 81 Williamsburg Drive. Now, please, please, please. At AA, you don't tell everybody else what goes on in the meeting, so I please ask that none of you tell anybody else that I admitted that. Please keep it to yourself. And before I get into the information that I brought tonight, just one comment about the issue of the location being that of last resort. I'm serving currently as Vice Chair of the Town Charter Review Committee, and one of the things we're absolutely committed to is this charter that we have makes this our legislative body. This legislative body made a decision that two other locations were not good. This is not the last resort. This is the best resort produced by a legis, assuming it gets approved, produced by our legislative process and therefore it should be, if it's approved, a really good result because we used the legislative process to weed out those that were not acceptable to the people in the town. That's not a last resort. That's the best resort, and I just wanted to make that point. Interesting is that in the last two days, a study came out, and you're probably well aware that retirees today are living longer, healthier lives than those in past generations. Two results of this study, well, one of them, it came out from United Income, it's called the Stage of Retire, State of Retirees, How Longer Lives Have Changed Retirement. And one of, one of the results, one of the two results is that most retirees are not relocating to lower-tax, warmer-weather states, and that was sort of a surprise. The report is state, is based on data from multiple governments and private data sources. Retirees are also more physically active. That shouldn't be a surprise, but they're spending, but the time they spend watching TV is three times as much as the time they spend on physical activities. For every 10 minutes added onto the life of a retiring 60-year-old, one minute is spent watching TV and just 20 seconds is spent on exercise, outside activities or sports, according to the study. As the health and welfare of retirees have increased, more are choosing to stay in or near their homes and neighborhoods rather than moving to a lower state tax or cheaper rural areas within their states. That's why our senior population is increasing. It's not just Long Meadow. This is national. It's showing up, and there's a lot of statistics about increasing populations.
Could you please come to the conclusion?
Retirees are increasingly staying put and living in more expensive suburbs near urban areas instead of the less expensive rural areas. Nearly half of retirees are now living in suburbs or cities and the numbers have increased by almost 40%. Okay, retirees are more likely to move across town than to another state, and that's what the statistics are now showing us. That makes sense when we look at what's happened here in Long Meadow, and it says it's going to continue because it has been growing. And so, yeah, I'm a senior. I hate to admit it, but I am a senior, and I'm looking forward to having a facility that I can use and I can go to because I never went to the old one. The old one was an elementary school with short toilets, you know. It wasn't a senior center. It was a cludge that we used because we didn't have one. This is not a replacement. This is our first senior center, our first adult center.
Thank you. All right. At the, and we're trying to keep these to two minutes, folks. Is it as close to the two minutes as possible? At the yellow microphone, yes, sir.
Leo Vartanian, 500 Inverness Lane. I've got a question about ballfields, since there's one in the location. What is the plan for ballfields in town? Have we, I've heard that there may be a Bliss ballfield, Bliss ballfield going to be improved and a new field planned for Wolf Swamp. Can we have any update on that?
By ballfield, do you specifically mean ball diamonds or do you mean just playing fields generally?
Mr. Vartanian?
Playing fields generally.
Playing fields. So, you're correct. We are working on a strategic plan for Wolf Swamp, and that'll be a subject of warrant articles coming up. There are, there are two small baseball diamonds there that are used for slow pitch softball mostly. One, and one's, there was one baseball field there as well, but in terms of like playing statistics and kids getting involved in sports, the numbers for things like soccer and field hockey and lacrosse are on the rise here in Long Meadow, and baseball is relatively flat. And so, the demand for the type of field that we're proposing, which is a flex field where you can play soc, or not soccer, soccer, field hockey, things like that, those types of flex fields are in very high demand. And so, I think from a programmatic standpoint, we view it as a net, a greater good for the greater number for playing fields. And we do know that the reduced capacity for ball diamonds, though, is something we are looking at on a separate track in accordance with the Wolf Swamp strategic plan. There are other areas we could, where we could look at baseball diamond expansion as well, and that's something we are, if this goes through, we will certainly get, we will certainly do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, at the red microphone.
Ken Taylor, 149 Academy Drive. I've got a quick question. Can I make a motion from this microphone?
No, sir. You can speak in opposition at that microphone.
It is in opposition.
Well, you can, you can...
And I wanted to make a motion.
The motions are from the yellow microphone?
Pardon?
The motions are made at the yellow microphone in the center?
Okay.
And so, if, there are, there are a lot of people waiting in line at that yellow microphone, so you can speak in opposition to this motion if you'd like.
Okay, I'll speak.
Okay.
I'm for the new senior citizen center, but I'm against Article 14, yeah, that's right, to, for building, for $14 million. I believe the proposed senior citizen center to be overpriced. The scope of this work should be limited to the services for the seniors. In all of the views that were presented earlier by the architect, I saw premium-priced space and architectural features that I think are not necessary requirements for our center. After that, it becomes a motion. I recommend that the Article 14 be tabled and the architect go back to the drawing board and give us a more economical, less costly alternative.
Thank you. At the green microphone? Marie Angelie, the...
Marie Angelie, this 199 Tanglewood Drive. I'd like to speak in favor of the article. We need to keep investing in our community. The gymnasium is for the seniors. It's not just for the young people in town. Active seniors are a very important part of the program. The pickleball is very, very popular. What the architect has explained is that is the most used room in all senior centers across the Commonwealth. So that is a very important part. Now, have we added the extra walkway? That's for seniors to be able to get out and walk when the weather's not good so they don't have to go to the mall. And the activity level is very important for the longevity of our seniors. And in regards to the park, it doesn't obliterate the park, it actually is investment in the park. Right now, you'll see the courts are rotted, they're very hard to use. Some pickleball people do try to go out and use them. The ball fields are very old, they need to be revamped. This is going to revamp the whole area, fix up the pool area, and will actually be an asset to the south end of town. The building of a 21st century senior center, not just for the next 10 years, but we really have to look for the future, will be the jewel, the crown of Long Meadow as an age-friendly community. It'll be a great town for retirees as well as families. Please support the article.
Thank you. Yes, at the yellow microphone?
Louis Robin, 942 Long Meadow Street. I move to call the question, please.
Okay. A motion to call the question has been made. Is there a second? It is not debatable. This motion requires a two-thirds majority in order to pass. And what this does is if we vote in the affirmative, then we shall come directly to a vote on the main motion. If it fails, then we keep discussing. So all those in favor of the motion to call the question, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. We shall now come directly to a vote on the main motion on Article 14. This requires a two-thirds majority. I would ask that all voters be seated at this point. Is there anybody in the, would the police check if there's anybody in the lobby? Would the police officers please check to make sure that if there's anybody in the lobby that they would like to come to vote? Okay? Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? The motion passes by two-thirds declaration. Article 34. Article 34. If you recall, this is the motion that was advanced, excuse me, the article that was advanced in an earlier motion. Would the citizen petitioner come to the front, this front microphone, please? And I would ask that if anybody is wishing to leave, that they do so as quietly as possible so that we can continue with the business. And state your name and address, please.
My name is Kathy Labella and I live at 325 Farmington Road. I make a motion that the town move to vote to reduce plastic bag use by banning lightweight, non-biodegradable, single-use, plastic carryout bags, which are typically made of polyethylene and non-renewable fossil fuels. This is the bag I'm talking about.
Ms. Labella, are you finished the motion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Ms. Labella.
Thank you. Why should we ban, ban plastic bags? Number one, the composition of the bags.
Excuse me, Ms. Labella. I would just ask the people leaving to please quiet down so that we can hear the speech. Thank you.
Okay. Number one, why we should ban plastic bags. The composition of the bags. These bags are made of petroleum and natural gas, which are non-renewable natural resources. When we make these bags, not only do we deplete our natural resources, but we need energy and use energy to make them. And a byproduct of that production is greenhouse gases. So we're destroying the ozone layer and ultimately contributing negatively to our climate change. Secondly, these bags do not biodegrade. According to the Sierra Club, in the presence of light, the bags take approximately 200 years or more to fragment, not biodegrade, fragment into smaller particles, which are called microplastics. When these enter our environment, whether it's the water or the land, they never leave. They're there for good. Number three, plastic bags are harmful to wildlife, marine life, and most importantly, to human beings. Plastic bags are often mistaken by animals as food. And so when they ingest these, they could choke, strangle, and ultimately die. The microplastics in the ocean are not only appear as food for marine life, but they can also attract harmful toxins like PCB. So when marine life ingests this, it goes up the food chain and we may find this on our dinner table. According to marine organizations like Oceana, it's predicted that by 2050, there's going to be more plastic in the ocean than fish. Microplastics have even been found now in the pristine waters of the Arctic Ocean. National Geographic reported on a few studies. One study found that there were at least 700 species of fish and animals that had eaten plastic. Another study of freshwater environments found that 83% of the fish had plastic in their guts. We all know plastic is a litter problem, causes blight. Another reason that we should ban plastic bags is that they're not easy to recycle and they do cost money to pay for and clean up after. Plastic bags tend to get caught in recycling machinery and most facilities don't have the capability to do it, so they don't. And according to the U.S. EPA, only 5% of plastic bags are recycled. Bags, and now the Sierra Club of Massachusetts say that residents in Massachusetts are estimated to use more than 2 billion bags per year. That's almost a bag a day per person. Bags aren't free and they are incorporated into the price of the item that you buy at your establishment. And lastly, they take up space in our crowded landfills. Lastly, I would like to just say that, you know, bans, bans on plastic bags are taking place locally and internationally. In Massachusetts, as of May 2018, over 70 towns and cities have banned single-use plastic bags. This represents over one-third of the state's population. And we have to be proud because in Massachusetts, we have more local bans than any state in the country except for California. Worldwide countries in Africa, Asia, South America, Europe, Australia, North America have all instituted bans or restrictions on plastic bags. Sadly, in the United States, due to lobbyists in the petroleum and the plastic industry, they have stopped or slowed the movement to ban plastic bags. According to the National Conference of State Legislatures, and this is 2017, there are only a few states really in the country that have solely banned plastic bags. There's some recycling and some restrictions in other states. Some states have bills pending, like Massachusetts. And the reason I went forward with this was because Massachusetts, the Massachusetts bill is now in the committee for House Ways and Means and it looks like, according to the rep, that it's not, our rep, that it's not going to be coming up for a vote anytime soon. And part of that is due to lobbyists. So we, you know, in conclusion, I know chap, plastic bags are convenient and they're cheap, but we really have to ask ourselves, do the advantages outweigh the disadvantages? We can solve this issue by using paper bags that are recyclable. And I know that is not the greatest alternative, but at least they biodegrade. But ultimately, what you can do is bring your own reusable bags. This is an opportunity we have to do our small part to reduce our footprint in this environment. Please do the right thing for the earth's health, our health, and the health of our children and vote yes to ban single carryout bags. Thank you.
Any further discussion, please?
Peter Landen, 5 Meadowbrook. Has this been coordinated with the Department of Health and the town of Long Meadow, ma'am?
Ms. Labella, can you answer that question?
No, but I have spoken with, in the clerk's office. It came up, I don't know if you're referring to that as far as enforcement?
So the answer would be no, then? Okay, thank you. At the red microphone?
19 Longfellow Drive, Armin Ray. I'd speak in against this measure for a couple of different reasons. One, we're talking about paper versus plastic as proposed there. There is a lot of debate whether the carbon impact of paper is greater than that of plastic right now. And the reason being, yes, it's biodegradable, but it weighs a lot more, which causes a lot more fuel for transportation, a lot more space for storage for our stores and commercial operations. Secondly, cop, our commercial operations in town rely upon plastic bags in their daily operations. We know where the cost of that impact is going to hit. It's going to hit our wallets as well. So I think it's well-intentioned. I don't think I'd ever want to be compared to California, but, but as far as Massachusetts goes, I don't think this is the right thing for our town.
Yes? Mr. Starr?
Nobody in favor. Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg Drive. I too will speak against it for several of the similar reasons, but I'll let those go. And let me talk about some others. The issue of what will replace it is not established yet as what makes sense. The issue of using your own bags from home, reusable, clearly is a bad choice. That has been shown by many studies to be very unhealthy because those bags that are brought are contaminated in many cases with various microorganisms. They're not clean and that is a big problem with those. So the replacement is not bringing your own reusable bags. That is not a good thing. So you're stuck with what will replace it. The reason that people use them is because they like them. They're much more convenient, there's no question about that. And one thing that can happen very easily is people will stop shopping at Big Y and they'll go to East Long Meadow where, you know, it's Big Y here, they'll go to East Long Meadow or places else on the way home where they can shop with that. So I think you need to think a lot more about what the impact of this would be. We don't have all the studies, this is premature, and if we do it in Long Meadow, we will save one fish. So you need to recognize that until the state makes the decision to do something on a statewide basis, and they've decided not to for whatever reasons, until that happens, our impact is almost zero if we were to change it. Thank you.
Turn to the green microphone, please.
Brian David Crawford, 5 Unit Strive. As a lifelong Californian, I'd like to speak on why California did this. California went this route because cities went this route. Landmark cities like Berkeley, San Francisco, cities that people will say, I don't want to be identified with them. They led the charge to get to the state like this. It lowered costs in the grocery store because now the grocery stores were not stocking these items. If you go to a grocery store like Aldi, which I admit, not a lot of people in Long Meadow go to Aldi, they'll have lower costs because you're bringing your own bags. You reuse the bags, you can wash the bags, you can do these things that are better for the environment and cut down on the reducing the waste. Because that's the first step in environmentalism. Reduce the waste. Reuse and then recycle. Reducing the things we use and the things we buy is the most important thing we can be doing in our environment and our community. Long Meadow can be on the front edge of this. Because if we get ahead of this, other cities will follow. That's why I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. At the red microphone?
Paul Basile, 21 Beckwith Drive. I'm opposed to this for three basic points I want to make. A, they refer to these as single-use plastic bags. I use them for at least four or five different things besides bringing the groceries home. There's all sorts of things I use the bags for. Second, recycling. When I'm done with the bags, I recycle them at the supermarket. Stop and Shop, Big Y have bins, you can bring your bags back and they recycle them. And third, the litter problem. Littering is not a plastic bag problem, it's a people problem.
Thank you. At the green microphone, please.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Chase and I live at 236 Crestview Circle and I'd like to speak in favor of this single-use ban, single-use plastic bags. A number of reasons, aside from the fact that Long Meadow is a green community and we've promised to reduce our carbon emissions and plastic bags are a single, are large user, are made by using oil, which helps contribute to the carbon emissions. So we would be supporting what we're already doing by reducing and limiting the plastic bags. Two, we'd be sending a message to the state legislature that this is something that's important, that we need to be focusing on. And three, we need to really encourage the idea that we have to take a handle on how we preserve our environment for the next generation. When I take walks through Long Meadow, I am constantly picking up plastic bags and I'm tired of doing that. They scatter all over the place and I see them creating a mess along our areas that we'd like to be able to visit and enjoy rather than cleaning up all the time. So I really speak in support of this. And I also just want to add one additional thought. I just happen to have worked for FEMA in Texas, in Austin. They've totally gotten rid of plastic bags. You can't use them, you can't find them in any store, and that's in the deepest red state of Texas.
At the yellow microphone, please.
Yellow? Pete Landen, 5 Meadowbrook. How would this be enforced if it were to pass and how would it be handled administratively by the town of Long Meadow?
Hold on one moment. I don't know whether.
Is there a, is this a bylaw?
Ms. Labella, you can answer that as best you can and then we'll.
I would just tell you from other towns and cities that have passed this, it has been handled by the, a town administrator who can appoint somebody or something, a health department, the police, to enforce it. And as far as infractions go, I mean, those vary as well.
I hear from Mr. Crane on that.
So I'm not 100% sure. The, because it's a citizen's petition, we, I'm not sure which section of the general bylaws it would fit in, whether it would be criminal or something that would fall into the Board of Health or the Police Department. That is unclear to me. So I guess what we would do is we would look at what other, how other communities handle it.
At the green microphone, yes. Ms. Friedman?
My name is Mary Friedman and I live at 247 Inverness Lane in Long Meadow. This is not rocket science. This is the right thing to do. Recycling plastic bags, if you listened, and I applaud Catherine Labella for bringing this article. If you heard what she said, 5.2% of plastic bags are recycled. If we cut down our use of them, we will reduce the problem. We have to do that. I go with my friend Mark Pullman every year to Haiti, where they don't unfortunately have municipal trash pickup. It looks apocalyptic there because when you drive over a bridge where there's a river, you see, you see strata of plastic, like rock strata. It's in the earth, it's in the ground, it's everywhere. When we throw plastic bags away, where is away? It's one of those giant, miles-wide islands of plastic in the ocean. This is the right thing to do. Few things in life are perfect. We could nitpick about how to enforce it, but we can go on record as doing the right thing tonight. And I really believe we should and I hope this passes. Thank you.
Yes, at the green microphone?
David Catan, 59 Prynwood Road. I also would like to speak in favor of the article. The previous speakers have really summarized my position, so I'm not going to go much longer than just saying that it is the right thing to do. Other municipalities have done this, not only in the Commonwealth, but across the nation, and they've seen their trash and waste on their streets go down, and it just makes a whole lot of sense from the standpoint of taking something that will outlive us all for eons away from, from, from use in filling our landfills and littering our streets.
At the red microphone?
Dan McKay, 75 Wolf Swamp Road. I'm not opposed to making things happen that are right for the environment. Plastic bags do not litter. It's the people. How many times do we make rules that involve people? It's people that are nasty habits. If you see how much trash rolls up Wolf Swamp Road with all McDonald's stuff on it, because people aren't in control of themselves. If people would recycle, these bags wouldn't be in the ocean. People stopped throwing them out their windows, there wouldn't be a problem. But it's a people problem, it's not a bag problem. Thank you.
I'd like to call, I'd like to call a motion to vote.
Well, if nobody else, we can't come to that motion until five have spoken in favor, five have spoken opposed. However, if no one rises to speak, then we come right to a vote. So your motion is not yet in order?
Do I stand here, or do I come back?
You could, or you, you know, you just wait. Yes, sir, at the green mic.
Hi, Christopher Trotta, 37 Home Crest Street. I just want to point out two things. Last night, a group of fifth graders from center school presented to the town council on a very similar proposal, that they wanted to get on a warrant for next year. So our future obviously wants to do this, but I also noticed that no one from the DeMore family who has a presence in town, or any shop owners, or anybody spoke.
Try not to use people's names if possible, thank you.
Sorry. No one from any of the retailers in town that provide these plastic bags has spoken against this. So obviously, they're for it, so I think we should all just vote with them.
Yes, sir.
Dave Marinelli, 9 Overbrook Lane. Nobody's in favor of litter, but I just ask you to really think about what we're doing here. There was a, I don't know if anybody listens to the Freakonomics podcast, but you have to be careful about unintended consequences. You know, these disposable plastic bags, if they're used properly and recycled, are actually very eco-friendly. You know, I use those plastic bags, I use paper bags too when I get them, but when I take a plastic bag home, I use it to pick vegetables in the garden when it's too dirty to reuse, I use it for the cat litter. I mean, I use them for trash bags, and so, yeah, they go to the landfill, but I use them instead of a hefty bag or something. And so I think that I'm using them responsibly. These non-disposable bags that people use at the supermarket, who's ever received so many of those that they've thrown them away? Well, that happens, and they go to the landfill, and actually, they use a lot more plastic to make those quote reusable bags, that people have so many of them that they're throwing them out. So it actually turns out that there's a lot more carbon footprint with these reusable bags, because there's so many of them that people don't need them all, and they throw them out. So they end up in the landfill. So you've got to be careful about what, you know, you're doing. If you use a bag responsibly, use it multiple times, throw it out when you're done with it, and don't throw it in the river, you know, that's a good thing. You know, I think it's great to have the option of paper or plastic, I don't see why we should take that away from people. Thank you.
I'd like to call the question.
If, if, if nobody else rises, then we can just come to a vote and.
Let's do that.
Okay, great. We're ready to come to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Back to Article 15. Mr. Low. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., there's somebody at the yellow microphone?
Madam Moderator? Roger Wojcik, again, 32, excuse me, 29 Burns Meadow. I make a motion to advance Article 33 at this town meeting to a place in the warrant immediately after the original Article 15. Reason being, to get the benefit of a large town vote on our request.
Is there a second? The motion to advance Article 33 has been made and seconded. You may speak to it? I'm sorry, you made the motion, and I think, and then you spoke to it, so hold on one second, please. This requires, is there anybody who would like to speak to this? Then we'll come, yes?
I'm sorry, there was so much noise in here. What are we voting on?
Thank you. Would the folks who are leaving, please be quiet? Thank you. The question before us right now is whether to advance Article 33 to immediately follow Article 15. We are just about to begin Article 15. That requires a 2/3 majority vote to advance an article. That's what we're voting on. If there's any discussion on that, we can have discussion, otherwise we'll come directly to a vote on whether to advance or not. Would all those in favor of advancing Article 33, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? The motion passes 2/3 declaration.
Thank you.
One moment, please. Thank you, Mr. Low. You can speak to, excuse me, make a motion on Article 15 now. Is, that one, he's wanted it to advance it to after Article 15. So we're dealing with Article 15, and then we'll go to 33.
But most importantly, Bryn Kartely is going to the semifinals.
Okay, we can clap for that. Thanks for the update.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $97,400 for the purpose of establishing the fiscal year 2019 District Improvement Financing, known as DIF, fund budget as follows. Debt, oh, debt service, $97,400.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.
The District Improvement Financing status. Chapter 42 of the Massachusetts General Law require the town to annually budget for the debt service related to Dwight Road, Maple Road DIF program. In fiscal year 2019, 100% of incremental property tax revenues associated with the town's Dwight Road Improvement District will be the funding source of the DIF fund. Any excess in the DIF fund at fiscal year will be returned to the general fund.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. The motion passes majority affirmative vote. We're now talking about Article 33. Mr. Wojcik?
Again, I'm Roger Wojcik, 29 Burns Meadow.
Right in the microphone, Mr. Wojcik, please.
Okay. The article is to see if the town will vote to fund from its annual.
I'm sorry, could you say, "I move that the town fund"?
Thank you. I move to see if the town will vote to fund from its annual operating budget, the amount of $7,000 or greater lesser sum for trash and recyclables removal from the senior community in town known as the Villas at Long Meadow.
One moment, please. Mr. Wojcik, I would like you to please specify the number, so omit the or greater lesser sum. So one more time, I move that, and then just say the number that you want.
Okay, shall I rerun the whole thing?
Please do.
Okay. I move to see if the town will vote to fund from its annual operating budget, the amount of $7,000 for trash removal from the senior community in town known as the Villas at Glen Meadow.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Wojcik.
The Villas consist of 39 individual residences, which are connected together in groups of two to six homes each. My wife and I own one of these units. These homes are located on three streets which connect to Converse at the north end of town. Our deed restriction says that every resident owner has to be at least 62 years old. These owners pay full real estate taxes on their homes based on market value. In aggregate, the community's real estate taxes total nearly $300,000 a year. For these taxes, we get the use of fire department service, police department service, the water and sewer system, the library, the senior, and roads and street maintenance and snow plowing, with the exception of our streets. We do not get maintenance of our streets, we do not get snow removal and ice control on our streets, we do not get maintenance of park areas and trees, nor do we get pickup of our trash and recyclables. Or do we get flushing of our fire hydrants, which interestingly enough, is a water department function, not a fire department responsibility. And we do not use any tax monies to support our kids in school, as deed restrictions do not allow children to live in our neighborhood, and so we send no children to school. Bottom line, the services that we can take advantage of cost us about 28 cents of each of our tax dollars, and those we cannot take advantage of cost us about 72 cents of each of our tax dollars. And frankly, we're happy to pay to help all of the service and services in town with 72 cents. The folks in the Villas are asked, are asking you to be treated simply the same as the Converse Street condominium, and every private home in town like yours, which is to have trash and recyclables picked up by the town on a regular basis. We believe that the cost to the town will be about $1.40 per year from each private homeowner's taxes. Please approve Article 33. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett? Behind you, Mr. Wojcik. Mr. Garrett is going to give the Finance Committee a recommendation? Could you move to the side, please?
The Finance Committee has not recommended this article.
Mr. Garrett wishes to seek recognition. Could you just move to the side, please? Thank you.
I just wanted to inform the residents of the town that the Finance Committee voted unanimously against recommending this article. There were two issues that were raised at our meeting. One was that the possibility that there were association dues that should be used for this purpose, and also the possibility that when the property was originally developed, that there was some understanding that this would be the condition on, on the development in the property, and whatever deal was made at that time should not now be reversed.
At the yellow microphone, and then Mr. Crane? Yes, sir? Oh, you're all set.
Holland Low, 71 Morgan Ridge, happen to be president of the Villas. We've heard a lot about seniors, and all of us in the Villas are seniors, over 62. As Roger said, we do not put any burden on the town or the schools, but we feel we should get the services the town gets, particularly the trash. We put well over $300,000 into the tax coffers, and we feel this is a small amount to give us what we want. We appreciate your interest, and I hope you will favor a vote. Thank you.
Mr. Crane?
I feel obligated to just articulate what the impact of approving this would be a little bit. And let me first say that I truly feel for the residents of the Villas. It's a fully built-out complex, so there's no Phase 2 or 3 that could generate more condo fees that would help lessen the burden on each individual owner. In many ways, the Villas are a microcosm for Long Meadow. So I sympathize with them deeply, and the stresses that the increased cost of services place on their condo association budgets every year. However, the fact of the matter is, the streets or the paved ways that run through the Villas are not streets, they're not public ways. In fact, in the condo documents, they are common area to be maintained by the members of the association. And the short of it is that extending service, services like this to the Villas is essentially a cut to everyone else. It will undoubtedly increase the cost of solid waste and recycling collection and disposal for the town. And I guess my primary objection is that each person who purchased a condo agreed to the association rules that stipulate that these costs are borne by the association. Like I said, I do feel for them and their situation, but it's my obligation to the 5,800 other households to note that this would have an impact on, on costs for everyone. So thank you.
Yes, sir, at the green microphone?
I'm Stuart Creelman. I live at 105 Green Meadow Drive, and I do not live in the areas under discussion, and yet, and I am a senior, and I am perfectly willing to pay $1 or $2 per year for their trash pickup.
At the red microphone?
Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg Drive. The issue here is one of much greater import. You heard the list of all of the things that the condos do not get. Those are all items that when the condos were built, were part of the agreement that the condos would pay for them, so that the town would not be burdened with extra expenses when the condos were built. That's part of the deal of every person who buys into that operation. To say that now we want trash comp, trash removal, you saw that there was another item on there for flushing of hydrants, snow removals next, tree protection, all of those items that the town gives to property owners who don't have such a restriction, okay, would have to come out of our pockets. And in addition, it would raise the value of those condominiums for the people who are in them. Because when they go to sell them, if they don't have to pay those fees, that simply raises the price of their property. So what we would be doing is increasing the value of their property by us paying services that they currently are paying for, that will decrease either what we provide to town if we try to keep the budget level, or increase our taxes. And we are running up against the cap. So I ask you to consider what it's all about, which is that this is the promise that they made when those were built. And to come back to the town now and say, "We just want this little piece," I understand why they want it, but that's not the deal that they made. Thank you.
At the yellow microphone? Yes?
I'm Elizabeth S. Kennedy. I live at 11 Western Drive. We have heard from Mr. Crane that these homes are on private ways, not publicly accepted streets. My question is, are there other areas in town which also are private ways, which would then want the same services fairly extended to them?
Mr. Crane?
It's an excellent question. We actually had some legal work done on this several years ago. This request was originally presented to the town by the residents of the Villas to me some years ago, and we did have some legal work done. And the, there are private ways that do receive some services, but they are private ways that do connect places. So they may not have been accepted because of how they were built, or their layout, or something like that, but they. something like that, but they are connections to places versus the private way that is only for the use and benefit of the Villas. And so, that's what distinguishes their private ways from Dun, I think Dun Road is still a private way, or West Road, or something like that. So, it's depending for those. And I guess the thing is, I haven't heard that if this is approved, they will actually lower their association fees, because I think their fees are very high. And so, I guess again, I think Mr. Star made a good point about that. But my primary concern is sending town contractors or town employees into private property.
The yellow microphone.
Brian David Crawford, five Unit Street. I did the math really quick. Seven thousand dollars divided by thirty-nine residents is $175 per person. I do not know how much I pay as a resident of Long Meadow for trash pickup, but I'm curious how does that compare to the $175 we'll be paying for these residents?
Mr. Crane?
The thing, I don't know where $7,000 comes from. So, I mean, I don't know what that number means or where it comes from, so I can't tell you a comparison to what you pay per household versus the seven thousand, because I don't know. It's a citizen's petition, I didn't provide that data to them.
Would you be able to tell me how much I roughly pay?
Excuse me, Mr. Crawford? You have one follow-up, or do you have any other questions you want to ask?
That was, I just want to know what I'm paying, so I can say, is this a good bargain or not?
Okay, Mr. Crane?
Actually, I don't know what it breaks down to per household, because the trash and recycling services are all covered by the general fund that we just approved. There is a enterprise fund, but it's mostly capitalized with recycling center stickers and bag fees. So, the rest of it is not broken down like a trash fee per house, it's all carried in the general fund. So, it's part of your property tax bill.
And I will recognize Mr. Wojcicki, he had an answer to a question earlier, and I neglected to recognize him. Mr. Wojcicki?
The $7,000 number is the budgeted cost for trash pickup from the Villas for the current fiscal year. So, we believe that will be a maximum amount, can't be sure. But it's a small contract with Republic Services, the same outfit that used to pick up your trash and recyclables in town some years ago.
At the red microphone?
Yeah, Arlene Miller, 68 East Greenwich Road. Since we're talking trash, I couldn't help myself. Love trash. If you go out privately, it's about $400 a year for the private contractor, about 200. We figure by having a curbside contract for the full town, it's about half of that. Since we do a great job reducing our trash with our program of One Barrel and Overflow Bags, it's a little less in Long Meadow per household because our trash collection and system is less than a lot of communities because of our program. But I would just say, from having worked in the state government and on trash for many years, it is the exception by far, not the rule, for communities to provide trash and recycling service to condominium associations.
At the green microphone. Mr. Low?
Holland, again. There are private ways in Long Meadow that get a pickup, some of them. Anthony Road, Baric Road, Fairview Road, Fama Road, Herbert Street, Park Drive. Those all get picked up, and they are private roads. We are asking a small part-
Could you speak right into the microphone, please?
Close to the microphone, close to it, to the microphone.
There are a number of private ways in Long Meadow that get a pickup by the town. Anthony Road, Baric Road, Fairview Road, Fama Road, and Park Avenue, among others. We put, again, $300,000 into the town, and we're asking for a very small service. We take the trucks from Long Meadow, a half an hour to pick up the garbage, a small amount of time. The roads are configured to handle it, because the company that does our garbage now did Long Meadow, and they have no problem getting their trucks through the Villas. I ask again, you reconsider this. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Star?
Madam Moderator, I'm confused now about the question. It seems to be asking for an allocation of $7,000 from the town to the condominiums for them to hire a private contractor. It is not asking the town to provide trash services. That makes no sense to me, but that appears to be what it's asking. Is that in fact what this says?
Mr. Wojcicki?
What we're asking to do is to have the town fund this service. Now, they can do it by using their existing system, simply extending it to the thirty-nine units that are in the Villas, or they can use it to pay our bills, that's entirely their choice. But we're asking the town to fund the service. I would recommend that they extend their existing system.
That is not what this says. Yeah, follow-up is, Madam Moderator, I don't know how you would rule on it, but that is not what this language says.
It is-
It's specifically a $7,000 allocation.
The motion is for trash removal, and I'm allowing discussion on whatever method people want to use within the scope of this article.
Okay.
At the green mic, yep.
Ann Welch, Madam Moderator?
Yep.
Forty-three Glenwood Circle, Long Meadow. I didn't know if I was allowed to speak because I'm a counter.
Yes.
I've been a resident of the town most of my life, and I think that over my lifetime, I've seen the rules and regulations in Long Meadow change. Every town meeting, we're voting new changes. I'm sure when the residents of the Burns Meadow bought, originally was made, there was rules, and over time, the rules change. They're asking for, I believe, a reasonable request. They weren't there when the rules were originally made, these residents, probably, I don't want to say all of them, but I'm sure a good number of them weren't in on the rules. They're asking us to change the rules now. And I think that if they're paying the same taxes as any of the rest of us are, why shouldn't they at least be able to ask to have the services that we have? And I think on this small matter, I say, "Let's pick up their trash." I mean, they're paying for the kids to go to school, they're paying for all kinds of things that they don't get from the town. Why can't we pay something that maybe they hadn't originally bargained for, but let's give it to them? It's trash, let's pick it up and get rid of it and stop arguing about it. Thank you.
At the red mic.
Stephen Weiss, eighteen Pioneer Drive. Leaving aside the comments that Mr. Star made, which I think were well taken, this is phrased as a one-time allocation for $7,000, but I have this feeling that that's going to become an annual part of the warrant. This is not $7,000, this would just be $7,000, but it doesn't address anything in future years. So, respectfully, I oppose this motion.
Are we ready to come to a vote? Okay. This motion requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? The motion fails, majority negative vote. We turn to Article sixteen now. Mr. Low?
I move that the town vote to appropriate $473,389 from the state for highway improvements under the authority of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter ninety, including funds to be received in fiscal year 2019 or any other applicable laws, and to authorize the Select Board, if necessary, to apply for, accept, and borrow in anticipation of state aid for such projects, expend.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.
The state annually allocates to the town a sum of money to be spent on town roads. This amount must be appropriated by town meeting. The town spends the money first and is reimbursed by the state upon completion of the project.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. I'm sorry, forgive me, this requires a two-thirds majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you, the motion passes by two-thirds declaration.
I move that Articles seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three be approved in a consent agenda.
The motion has been made and seconded. What this motion does is allows us to vote on all of those articles that are listed there. If anyone would like to discuss an article separately, when I repeat the numbers, call out "hold," and we will consider that article separately. Article seventeen, eighteen-
Please hold that one.
Okay. Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. One moment, please. Mr. Weiss, just clarifying, you wanted Article eighteen held?
No, it was Article nineteen, I thought.
Oh, okay.
If I misstated that, it was Article nineteen that I wished to have held.
Okay, to clarify, we are holding Article nineteen and Article twenty aside. We'll consider them after we take a vote on the consent agenda, including Articles seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Eighteen and eighteen.
Forgive me, and eighteen. Yes. Could you come to the microphone, please?
I'm Steve Kennedy at 11 Western Drive, I believe on twenty-three. I heard someone behind me say, "Hold."
All right, I'm going to repeat them one more time.
And allow enough time so people can-
Sure, sure.
Think about it.
Sure. Okay, holding eighteen. Nineteen, that's been held. Twenty has been held. Twenty-one, twenty-two. Hold on twenty-two. Twenty-three. There's a hold on twenty-three. So, we are considering Articles seventeen and twenty-one as part of a consent agenda. All those in favor of approving Articles seventeen and twenty-one, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. We now turn to Article eighteen.
I move the town vote to fund the community preservation project for the repair of the Bliss Park playground equipment in the amount of $30,000 funded from the Community Preservation Recreation Open Space Fund balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
This project will fund repairs and replacement parts for the playground in Bliss Park.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on the motion under Article eighteen. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you, the motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article nineteen, Ms. Angelides.
I move that the town vote to fund the community preservation project for the purchase of reusable molds and materials to build picnic tables and benches at the riverfront conservation area in the amount of $3,300 funded from the Community Preservation Recreation Open Space Fund balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
This project will allow for the purchase of reusable molds to create picnic tables and benches at the riverfront conservation area ordered that the public may better utilize and enjoy the town's riverfront property.
Further discussion?
Madam Moderator, again, Stephen Weiss, eighteen Pioneer Drive, and the Chair of the CPC, I would like to either, whatever the correct procedural vehicle is, either that we take no action on this or that it be withdrawn.
There's been a motion to take no action on this, this is debatable? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Weiss, you may speak to the motion to take no action.
Madam Moderator, while we approve this, and we think it's a great idea, this is one of those situations where there's a distinction between what's permissible under the statute and what's practical as a practical matter. And after speaking with town council, it's his opinion that this is not permitted under the CPA statute, and I think I agree with him, so that I think while we would like, while it's a great practical thing to do, it's just not permissible under the statute, and therefore, I think it should be withdrawn.
Any further discussion on the motion to take no action on Article nineteen? No. Okay, we shall come directly to a vote to take no action, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you, the motion to take no action is approved by majority affirmative vote. We now turn to Article twenty.
I move the town vote to fund the community preservation project for trail improvement and the purchase of trees and picnic tables in Bliss Park in the amount of $18,000 funded from the Community Preservation Recreation Open Space Fund balance, the sum of $17,000, and from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, the sum of $1,000.
Is there a second?
A second.
You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
This project will allow for the purchase of four picnic tables to be placed in Bliss Park for the rerouting of trails in the park to reduce erosion, and for the acquisition of trees where the woods meet open space.
Further discussion?
Yes, I'm opposed to this for three weeks.
Name and address, please? Could you state your name?
Albeseal, twenty-one Beckwith Drive. First of all, how is this money going to be broken down? Four picnic tables, $18,000? They want to plant trees at the edge of a forest? I mean, if they need trees, just go into the forest and dig a few up. It seems like an awful waste of money. I mean, $18,000 for four picnic tables and to put trees at the edge of the forest? I can't see it, I'm sorry.
At the green microphone, Mr. Weiss.
Again, Stephen Weiss, eighteen Pioneer Drive, Chair of the CPC. When we reviewed this application, it was actually fairly itemized in terms of how much the picnic, and I don't have the application with me, it's been on the town website since November or December for anybody to look at, but it talked about the number of picnic tables, what it would cost for trees, what it would cost for trail maintenance. It was a fairly detailed and fairly itemized application, and we were satisfied that it was appropriate.
At the red microphone?
Barbara Wenig, 139 Maple Road. I would echo the last speaker, $18,000 seems like an awful lot of money to put trees in the woods and to build picnic tables.
At the green mic?
Yes, my name is Betsy Port. I live at 212 Farmington Road. I'm one of the authors of this specific number twenty on the warrant, and I would like to say that some of the information was not included. What we are proposing is to use very hard, special, treated plastic tables, because what we have right now at Bliss Park are splintered and old and dangerous for children to sit on. What we were proposing originally is to have half of them be handicapped accessible picnic tables, and the other half would be classic traditional picnic tables. I don't remember the exact cost, but they are larger than usual, and they are very long-lasting. As far as the trail maintenance, nothing has been done in the wooded areas of Bliss Park, to my knowledge, ever in fifty, sixty, seventy years. This would be the first time that someone would have an opportunity to improve the trails, to make them safer. There are many trails that are very dangerous with exposed root systems, and I think this is a real enhancement to the area. Trees would be added, we are talking about saplings. There are a lot of dead trees, there are a lot of dangerous trees, and if anyone goes into Bliss Park, they will see this for themselves. Thank you.
At the yellow microphone.
Steve Kennedy-
Steve Kennedy, eleven Western Drive. I was wondering if someone could explain why Article nineteen that proposes to build a picnic table or tables and benches differs from Article twenty, which proposes the purchase of picnic tables? And it doesn't make sense to me, so perhaps Mr. Weiss can address that.
I'm going to direct it to town council, Mike Snyder.
That's fine. Frankly, it doesn't make sense to me either, but this is what we got from Beacon Hill. The riverfront area is conservation land, and you're not allowed to put those sorts of improvements in conservation land. And aside from that, the CPC never allows a town to purchase tooling or other materials to make these sorts of improvements themselves, even though that makes sense.
Yes, sir.
Pete Landon, five Meadowbrook. I was, had a husky and walked through the interior of Bliss Park on these trails. Contributed to their demise. It's terrible in there, it's dangerous. Everything that Mrs. Port just said on the condition of the trails in Bliss Park is amazing. People talk about the park, it's really, that section of it has become a dog park, and it's been trashed.
Any further discussion on Article twenty? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. We turn to Article twenty-two.
I move the town vote to fund the community preservation project for Wolf Swamp Field leveling, field improvements and an irrigation system in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars funded from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance.
Is there a second?
A second.
You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
This project provides partial funding as part of a long-term plan to renovate and improve the conditions of the Wolf Swamp Road Fields, which is expected to take several years by providing irrigation, resurfacing the fields, and reconfiguring them. The fields are used for soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, and baseball by many age groups, and these capital improvements would make the fields more functional for their intended recreational use. This project will be coordinated with the project to improve traffic flow and parking at the fields, also being partially funded this year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on Article twenty-two. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article twenty-three.
I move the town vote to fund the community preservation project for the Wolf Swamp Field Ring Road in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars funding from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
This project provides partial funding and part of a long-term plan to improve traffic flow and parking at the Wolf Swamp Field Road Fields, and to make Wolf Swamp Road Fields more functional for their intended recreational use. This project will be coordinated with the project to improve the conditions of the playing fields, also being partially funded this year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote. Article twenty-four.
I move the town vote to fund the community preservation project for a feasibility study of the former train station, the amount of ten thousand dollars funded from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
You may speak to it?
A portion of the current DPW building is the former train station, which was built in eighteen eighty-four and is a building of historic significance, subject to the provisions of the demolition-delay bylaws. These funds will provide an architectural study to determine if alternate uses and possibly alternate locations are feasible.
Any further discussion, Mr. Garrett?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously not to approve this article. It was the feeling of the members of the Finance Committee that the town has already spent in the neighborhood of twenty-one million dollars through an extensive process of evaluating, reevaluating the site to move the DPW. We don't need any, we didn't feel that we needed any more feasibility studies with respect to that site. The only thing that needs, that needs to be done with that site are funds, town funds to be used for that site is for the demolition to complete the process of moving the DPW.
Mr. Weiss?
Again, Stephen Weiss, eighteen Pioneer Drive. On this one, I'm wearing my hat, I'm wearing three hats. One as Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, one as a member of the Historical Commission, and one as a member of the Demolition Delay Committee. And I wish we had had the opportunity to speak with the Finance Committee beforehand. This isn't a feasibility study about the DPW lot generally. This is a study about one piece of one building. The, a portion of the DPW building is, was originally the Long Meadow Train Station, which was built in the eighteen eighties. It is therefore subject to the demolition delay bylaw, because it was built before nineteen oh one. It's our understanding that when the DPW, the new DPW lot is completed, it's likely that the town is going to seek to pull a permit to demolish all of the structures at the DPW, the current DPW facility. That will invoke the requirements of the demolition delay bylaw. Under the bylaw, the demolition delay committee has thirty days to make a determination if the property has sufficient historical significance to invoke the, invoke the provisions of the statute to delay demolition for nine months. We actually applaud the town for having put this application in for a variety of reasons. We don't know if there's enough, if there's enough historical significance in that, that old portion of the DPW building, but there might be. In fact, actually, after this was approved by the, by the Community Preservation Committee, the demolition delay committee took a look, took a tour through the DPW building. And while we didn't go in there with crowbars and jackhammers and start pulling apart siding, I think Mr. Mazza would have had a problem with that. From what we could see, there's no question that some of the original structure remains. Whether it, what kind of condition it's in, we don't really know. Whether it's feasible to preserve it, we don't really know. But we do know, from the demolition delay committee point of view, that we're going to need more information in order to make that decision. And this study would not, it doesn't go to the entire DPW facility. It just goes to whether, A, if this, if this, this building has historical significance, B, if it's feasible to preserve it. If so, how, and what it might cost. And frankly, so in other words, this application simply allows the demolition delay committee to have the tools necessary to make the right decision.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote.
Madam Moderator?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to advance question number thirty-five, please.
Is there a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, state your name and address first, please.
Yes, James Goodhigh, seventy-eight Dover Road.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to the motion to advance.
Yes, I think it would be valuable to move that to the same time that we've just recently voted on two other Wolf Swamp Field-related votes, so that's why we'd like to have thirty-five moved forward as well.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, you're advancing thirty-five to the current position, current spot right now?
Yes, to now, please.
Okay. This requires a two-thirds majority? Would all, any further discussion on advancing? Okay. All those in favor of advancing Article thirty-five to now, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards? The motion passes by two-thirds declaration. The lead petitioner should, for Article thirty-five?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Write into the microphone, please. You may get the motion, please.
My name is Mike Michon, one oh one Hopkins Place. I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
So this, this article is in conjunction with Articles twenty-two and twenty-three. "We all know that the condition of the Wolf Swamp Fields create unsafe playing conditions for our children. It is now time to join together and restore the fields." Please vote yes in this article, thank you very much.
Further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The Finance Committee has voted not to recommend Article thirty-five. We heard a presentation from Mr. Michon regarding this article in our deliberations regarding our recommendation. If you will direct your attention to Articles twenty-two and Articles twenty-three, you'll see that the community preservation has already embarked on a project to improve Wolf Swamp Fields. There was not sufficient information or evidence or persuasive material provided to the Finance Committee during the course of the meeting to persuade us that there was any reason to spend additional funds to speed up the project, which is essentially what Article thirty-five is requesting. The CPC has already put the project on track to accomplish all the goals that are sought to be accomplished by the Article thirty-five, and with the plan in place, the Finance Committee was, is recommending that we follow the plan that's already been put in place and not spend the additional funds for the sole purpose of accelerating the project.
Ms. Angelides?
Excuse me, and I, there's probably the most important thing I would be remiss to mention is that approving this, these additional funds being expended would put our budget over the two-point-three percent that the Finance Committee recommended that the tax levy should not be raised. So a tremendous amount of work and cooperation across multiple departments went into fashioning the budget that you folks approved today. Approving this article would essentially undo all that, so given that the Finance Committee's, one of our chief goals during this, this budget cycle was to encourage our departments in our town government not to exceed the two-point-three percent, the Finance Committee did not recommend this article, which would undo that work.
Ms. Angelides?
Maria Angelides, one ninety-nine Tanglewood Drive. I have a question, where is the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars coming from?
Mr. Michon?
From the general fund.
Are you asking a follow-up question?
A follow-up question, where from the, from the budget are we going to cut to bring the one fifty-five?
Who can answer that? Mr. Crane?
It would be additional taxation, and would really rewrite a bunch of the things that were already just approved by town meeting. And I, when the Articles twenty-two and twenty-three were being called, if I may, I was going to give a presentation about the Wolf Swamp strategic plan that lays out all the goals and the initiatives we're taking and the timeline for getting this all done, mostly because I understood that this article was going to be withdrawn. That's what I, that's what I was told. So if people still want to see, and I think people saw me get up with my laptop and decided they didn't want to have any discussion about it, but if people want to know what the, what the strategic plan is, I can certainly show you, but this really, there's a hundred, I think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars already allocated in Article twenty-two, which is what the CPA felt was justified. This is just, you know, that was not a satisfactory answer, so this is a petition, which is fine, but we have a plan, we can't do it all at once. There is a phasing of this that needs to be accommodated, and I believe this article would disrupt the phasing and disrupt the budget.
At the green microphone?
Nineteen Longfellow Drive, Armin Ray. As a coach, as a referee across Pioneer Valley for multiple sports, I can tell you that the, the status of the Wolf Swamp Fields are deplorable when compared to almost any one of the other towns around us. If you look at the Chestnut Fields down Springfield and North End, they far exceed what we have here in town. If you need any reason to accelerate what our kids are playing on, they're divots. The kids are tripping, twisting ankles, falling because of the unevenness of the fields. Now, I respect all that goes into the budget planning process, I truly do. I remember at the end of the year always turning back money, which we then had to chew up in, in the fall, and I'm sure there's a hundred and fifty thousand that, as part of turnbacks at the end of the year, can be going to the general fund to find something to accelerate. But if you need any more data than to just get out of your car, drive to that parking lot, walk around those bumpy fields, and find out why our kids are getting injured on a daily, weekly basis here, and why when other teams come into our town, and I listen to these comments as a referee in town, about how, wow, how can a town like Long Meadow have fields like this? How can Long Meadow, with the brand-new school and where everybody wants to be, not have fields that are to the standards of the rest of the surrounding area? So if there's a chance to accelerate them, I fully support what Mike and everybody else is trying to do in this town.
Mr. Starr? Mr. Starr?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Larry Starr, eighty-one Williamsburg. There's no question in anybody's mind that these fields need to be done. And what is going on here is that the amount of money that we contributed this year to get it going was limited, and the Community, Community Preservation Committee came up with half of it to pay for two projects, two-thirds of it, really. And the balance will be funded probably next year, when the project will be completed. That's normal, it takes time to do projects. Yes, it needs to be done, I don't think there was any argument about it needs to be done, but this would unbalance our budget. The, all of the work done by the Finance Committee, by Community Preservation, by everybody, town, town management, okay, would go down the drain, and they'd have to figure out what to do now with the budget again. So, yes, we need to do it, no question. Now is not the time, this will be on next year's budget, and it'll come within the dollar amount, because we'll spend it over two years, like we buy fire trucks. Same thing, we spend it over a couple of years, and that's what needs to be done here. We all know it needs to be done, it will get done, it needs to be voted down.
At the green microphone?
Yeah, Alex Matreski, sixty-eight Ellington Street. I guess maybe I just wanted to give a little bit of background about this project and a couple of things that have been discussed.
Speak, write in the microphone, please.
I just wanted to provide a little bit of background about this project and what has already taken place. So this project was started about two years ago with going to the Community Preservation Commission and starting to seek funds to improve the fields around town, and Wolf Swamp Field is one that's being discussed right now, but there were other applications to improve the Wolf Swamp School and the Blueberry Hills School Fields. It takes a lot of time and effort to get where we are here, meeting with a lot of contractors to provide a lot of detailed information to the CPC to show that these are real projects in need. And also want to commend the CPC and Mr. Weiss here, who have been tremendous to work with, understand that this is a project that they really needed to provide some seed money to start this project. Last year, the CPC approved eighty thousand dollars, which were going to go toward drilling a well and installing a pump there for the irrigation. Now, this year, we came back and were asking about three hundred thousand dollars from the CPC, so that we can actually really start a one-third of the phase to work on these fields. This is a million-dollar project. The CPC only granted us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because they have limited funds. So if you, if we look and see what is being, what we have been received so far to start this one-million-dollar project, this will be a seven-to-ten-year project. So we're asking for this additional funds, so at least maybe one-third of the field would start to be improved. And now also you have to keep in mind that these will be fields that will not be used for a year or so until the grass and everything else is being worked on, so. So it's a multi-year, multi-step project as is, but at the pace of $150,000 a year will be a decade before we see actual real grass. And just maybe one last piece, those fields do not have grass. They're dirt fields. I coach their soccer. I coach field hockey. It's embarrassment because field hockey should not be played on those fields. And lastly, I play soccer there, pickup soccer, and I tore my ligaments on those divots on a friendly game, and I was in a cast and a boot for eight weeks. So those fields are terrible.
Thank you. At the yellow microphone?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to Article-
Name and address, please.
Yes, James Goodhein, 78 Dover Road. I'd like to make an amendment to Article 35, replacing the language "raise and appropriate" with the language of "transfer from operational stabilization funds."
I can't permit that because it is beyond the scope of the article. It's an entirely different process.
Do I identify a different funding source?
It is, yes. People come to the town meeting expecting a certain boundary of the articles. That is a completely different mechanism, so no, I cannot permit that. Ms. Angelides?
Marie Angelides, 199 Tanglewood Drive. I'm speaking against the motion. This is multi-year work that the three boards, the School Committee, Finance Committee, and Select Board, has done to try to pull back from hitting our cap. And I was told over and over again every year, don't try to do this because someone will just go and try to get money off the floor. We can't work together as a town like that. There's always going to be someone who's going to feel that their needs jump everyone else's. My concern is that need is there. Money is being put towards it this year, but people want it now. That means someone else who decided they weren't going to go forward and push what they feel that the, what we should really be, our needs are in town, aren't going forward. The School Committee has pulled back on things they could have put in. We could have looked at other things that other departments needed, that we said, no, we've got to cut back because we're going to hit our two-and-a-half cap. We have to start showing some discipline. And if we continue with this process in taking the money from the floor, unbalancing our budget, all our efforts at fiscal conservative, careful planning over the next few years, we're back to square one where we were three years ago. So I'm very, very concerned about this type of move. The fields need to be done. The process is here for us to try to get money in different sources, but at the last minute to come in and pull the money out from under where we're trying to save, I think is not healthy for our community. And when people say, "Operation stabilization, let's grab it from here," we got AA2, but we were also told we had to move up in our funding. We are a little low. You read that in the, what the book was talked about in our AA2 mood rating. So please reconsider this. I sympathize with what needs to be done in the fields, but I don't feel this is the right way to do it. Thank you.
At the green mic. Yes, sir, at the yellow mic then.
Leo Vartanian, 500 Inverness Lane. I've got a question regarding if we approve this article, do we have to, excuse me, do we have to readdress Article 7 where we approved the budget and reapprove a different budget tonight?
I'll direct that to either Mr. Pasterzic or Mr. Crane.
You would not have to go back and readjust anything in Article 7 at this point in time. What we would need to do is, first of all, find out what numbers come in from the state at year-end, and then potentially have a balanced budget sometime in the fall. But I think there would be ample money in order to fund that budget that was presented and already voted on.
Mr. Landen?
Pete Landen, 5 Matterbrook. I think when safety of children and adults playing on the fields entered the discussion, it was a game changer and that the parties ought to get together to see if, which was the intent of the petitions, citizen petition initiative, that they get back on track as quickly as possible.
Mr. Michon?
Can we just get an updated budget, the budget from Boston, from Mr. Pasterzic, and where we're at right now with the Senate and the House?
I think folks saw from Town Manager Crane's presentation, he laid out the numbers that we use for the state numbers in the budget process. We do use the governor's numbers in the budget. Those are the numbers that are there. Those are the numbers that meet the 2.3 percent that the Finance Committee and the Select Board set to stay under the 2.5 Prop 2.5 limitations. The House version of the budget does add another $165,000 to our income, but again, it's still a wild card. There's no guarantee that the House will give us that money. There's no guarantee that the Senate will confirm that money, and there's just no guarantee of what that money is at year-end. But right now, the House numbers are very favorable, and they do add another $165,000 to our coffers.
Further discussion? Yes?
Barbara Wenig, 139 Maple Road. I would just like to support Marie Angelides in her point that this feels like it's an end run around what was a very thoughtful process to develop the budget.
Ms. Wenig, okay, thank you. Are we ready to come to a vote? Okay. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? The motion fails. Majority negative vote. We now turn to Article 25.
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Foster.
Effective November 7, 2016, as part of the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act, revolving funds created pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E1/2, must be established in the town bylaws.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. 26, Mr. Foster? Mr. Foster?
Yes. Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
Effective November 7, 2016, as part of the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act, revolving funds created pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E1/2, as established in the town bylaws, must have an annual expenditure limit set at the town's annual town meeting. This article sets the annual expenditure limit.
Any further discussion? We'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. The motion passes. Majority affirmative vote. Article 27.
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
The interest needs to be acquired in order to allow the construction of improvements to Dwight Road Corridor, as contemplated by the DIF financing package approved in the 2016 annual town meeting. Any payments to property owners will be funded by bond proceeds that were authorized in Article 14 of the 2017 annual town meeting warrant.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Dan Schwarting, 24 Wendover Road. I'd like to thank everyone who still is here and urge the town meeting to vote against this article. I'd like to remind everyone that the proposal here is essentially a five-lane highway on the edge of our town on what is currently Dwight Road. First of all, I would question the need for this. Traffic in this location really is not that bad except for a short period in the morning with traffic coming from East Long Meadow into town and a short period in the afternoon with traffic going from our town back into East Long Meadow. Before I moved to town, I commuted here every day for about 18 months or so, so I'm pretty familiar with the intersection. The addition of a medical facility here really will not do much to change that. Traffic to the medical facility is going to be trickling in and out all day long, mostly during the hours when traffic at this intersection really is not an issue at all. So what will this help? This will help people from East Long Meadow, Hampden, Summers, and other towns east of here to cut through our town on their way to Interstate 91. It'll do very little to help us, and in fact, it will hurt traffic in our town, and it will be a cost to our town. All that traffic that might be going up Sumner Ave through Springfield now or maybe going around through Enfield, they'll have an easier time getting through our town. That will mean more noise, more pollution in our air, more of a threat to the safety of our children walking to school every day, and finally, more traffic on Long Meadow Street, Laurel Street, and Converse, trying to get on the 91 every morning, as I'm sure many of you are aware can be kind of a squeeze. Finally, let's talk about the financial costs. We've heard a lot about finances tonight. As was expressed in Article 15, if the money is not spent from the district improvement financing on this project, it will revert into the town's general fund. So spending money on this project will be less money than we have as a town for other things and other priorities. This will also mean greater maintenance costs. It's going to take more time to plow. It's going to be more money to repave. This will mean greater costs for stormwater as well. You may recall from last year's town meeting that stormwater is a concern. More pavement here is going to mean more costs for treating stormwater in this location. And so I would point out, just to conclude, that this project is very little benefit to the people of Long Meadow and is nothing but cost for us, and I would urge the town meeting to vote against this article. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Crane?
I just want to clarify a few facts. I respect the gentleman's information. The facts of the project don't really line up with much of what you said. It is a high-crash area. It is a reasonably significant corridor. We are adding sidewalks and bike lanes that don't presently exist to make the area more passable for pedestrians and cyclists. The funding for the project is dedicated to the district, which is something that's already been approved by town meeting. The funding has already been approved by town meeting. All we're doing here is voting to get the rights of entry. We need to actually carry forward the project that was in fact approved already.
Further discussion? Yes?
Two questions in response to that. First of all, is there any reason that pedestrian and bike facilities could not be added without expanding the width of the roadway? And secondly, Article 15 stated, I don't have the exact text on me, but it stated that money that was not spent from the DIF would roll over into the town's general fund. Are you stating that that's incorrect, or was the article misleading? What happens if we do not go forward with this project to that money?
Mr. Crane?
Again, the project was already approved by town meeting, so prior town meeting voters have already said this is something we want to do. The article in question just allows us to go ahead and do that. They committed the funds for this project. The funds are ample. We actually got our bids back on this one, and they are almost $500,000 less than our budget, so we had good news on the bidding on this one as well. So this is kind of a good thing for the project. And I mean, I would, I don't even really know where to start on the traffic data and the assumptions you're making, but I technically, you would need to widen the road to put in bike lanes and sidewalks, and this really helps. It's not just that. It's the signal equipment, and I guess I would disagree with your characterization of the traffic flow through that area, and I think the town meeting clearly did as well.
I now recognize Michael Schneider for a bit of clarification.
I just think it would be helpful for town meeting to look at what the scope of this motion is. It's simply to condemn some property interests in order to actually construct the project that was already approved. So that's all that's being decided here. I hope that is helpful.
Further discussion? Yes?
I don't want to keep folks here later than necessary, so I'll just make one more comment and ask one more question. First of all, my comment, I dispute the fact that you need a five-lane road for it to have bike lanes. I believe that bike lanes and sidewalks could be added with the width of the road that's there right now. Secondly, my question is, at what town meeting was this approved? I was here at the meeting a year ago where the DIF scheme was approved, but I don't recall that actually approving the road project. If you're saying that it did, then I don't believe that that article was very clearly
Which is, the question is, which town meeting was this approved at?
May 2017, Article 14.
Thank you. I now recognize Mr. Robin.
Louis Robin, 942 Long Meadow Street. Although I live at the other area of town, I work near this area. These are narrow streets. I don't see how you can put sidewalks and bike lanes in there at the present condition. And there is traffic at various times of the day. I don't think that someone traveling from East Long Meadow or Southfield who wants to cut through our area would want to cut through this area just because it's a little wider, because the wideness you need is for the medical center, which will generate traffic. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article 27? I wish to note that this requires a two-thirds majority. It's not listed in your warrant as such, but it does require a two-thirds majority of approval. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. The motion passes by Declaration two-thirds affirmative majority vote. Article 28, Mr. Foster?
Madam Moderator, I move to take no action on Article 28.
Is there a second? Any discussion on, oh, you may speak to it, Mr. Foster? Any reason?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll come directly to a vote. Oh, there is discussion, yes. On, this is a discussion on taking no action.
I would like Marcus Bouchard-
I'm sorry, sir. Name and address, please?
Marcus Bouchard, 354 Bliss Road. And I would like to take action on this tonight because it affects me personally.
Okay. So, speech in opposition to taking no action? Any? Okay?
Thank you, Madam- Just to clarify why I recommend to the Select Board that we take no action is that the Planning Board reported unfavorably on this, and if it fails tonight, it's at least two years before you can bring it back. We've gotten some feedback on how the article was worded, and it needs some more work, so we're going to keep working on it and bring it back at a later date. So I would, I hear you, but if it fails tonight, it's much worse, so let's keep working at it and bring it back.
Further discussion?
When would it come back?
Mr. Crane?
At a, potentially the fall town meeting, maybe at the next annual town meeting. It just depends.
Any further discussion on taking no action?
I'd still like to try to vote this out. There's a room full of people.
Well, we can come directly to a vote on taking no action. If that fails, then we'll take up another vote on it.
Okay.
All those in favor of taking no action, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Article 29.
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it.
This article would add a definition of monument sign to the definition section of the zoning bylaws to allow for this type of sign. Monument signs are commonly used to both improve wayfinding and decorative landscape features on non-residential properties.
And Planning Board recommendation?
The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend this warrant article.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Carmen Picnally, 57 Winward Road. I don't understand what this is. Can you explain to me what we're talking about? Monument signs? Are we talking about like the big signs you have outside of gas stations or 7-Elevens? Or, I'm sorry, I think you get my drift.
Okay. Mr. Crane?
The most obvious example, although I believe that would be larger than would be allowed under the dimensional requirements in the next article, are the entry signs to- are the entry signs to Bay Path University.
So, just so I know, we're not talking about when you drive through other towns, you've got on the side of the road, sign after sign after sign, 7-Eleven, Quickie Mart, you know, whatever it is.
Mr. Crane?
Yeah, these are like, like I said, if you look at Bay Path University, they have those masonry, ground-mounted masonry, they almost look like walls, and they say Bay Path University on them. And I think the thing is, these would be, we get to the next article, this just defines it. So, this article is the definition of monument signs for our bylaws. The next article is then how they would be regulated by special permit. But no, these are really just stone monuments or other hardscape materials with signage on them, and they are on the ground at the end of a driveway, for example, like Bay Path. You're familiar with Bay Path University?
No, I am, and I just wonder if they have it at Bay Path already, why do we have to change the law?
Mr. Crane?
It's kind of a quirk, and actually, Kevin just pointed out, Long Meadow High School also has them at the end of their driveway. There are actually a lot of these in town already, but they are not really covered by our bylaw in any way. And so, we're trying to bring the definition into the bylaw so that future signs have some sort of consistency. And there are other non-residential uses and residential zones that could benefit from this, and that way they have a plan.
Yes.
Yeah, Steve Kennedy of 11 Western Drive. Did I hear it read properly? Because I'm reading a sign made of durable materials where the entire bottom of the sign is affixed to the ground, that "in not eternally illuminated."
Yeah, that's a typo. Is not eternal, is not eternally illuminated.
I couldn't tell whether it was "in" or "is."
Yeah. That is not eternally illuminated.
And then I'm going to ask you what the purpose of defining one of these signs is.
If you look, if you look at our sign bylaws, the different types of signs all have definitions associated with them, so this is really consistent with that.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll come directly to a vote. Two-thirds majority is required for this to pass. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. This passes by two-thirds declaration. Affirmative vote. Article 30.
Madam Moderator, excuse me, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Foster.
This proposed addition to the zoning bylaw would allow for non-residential use located in residential use to have entry signs subject to special permit granted by the ZB A and subject to dimensional restrictions. Monument signs would improve wayfinding to non-residential properties and allow for decorative landscaping features.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Oh, yeah, there is, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please, forgive me. I need to get the Planning Board report first, and stay right there, though.
The Planning Board unanimously voted to recommend this warrant article as well.
Thank you, yes.
Just a question, Barbara Winnig, 139 Maple Road. A question on the height. So, we're saying that somebody could have the Bay Path walls, for example, they could be six feet high, where now they're not.
Mr. Crane?
The Bay Path example is illustrative. These dimensional requirements really mirror the dimensional requirements for other types of signage. But I'm six feet tall, and that seems like a lot, but if you have a large driveway or a large property that is a non-residential use, driving from the road, it doesn't seem like it's that large. And so, we used our existing dimensional restrictions as well as some models that we found from other communities to kind of set the dimensions at a reasonable way.
Do you have a, or you'll say, okay. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. The motion passes by two-thirds declaration affirmative vote. Article 31.
Madam Moderator, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Mr. Foster.
At the town annual meeting held May 10, 2017, the town approved Article 38, which re-accepted the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32, Section 20, dealing with OPEB funding as amended by Chapter 218, Section 15 of the Act of 2016, otherwise known as the Municipal Modernization Act. Additional requirements of the statute require the designation of a custodian and trustee or a board of trustees. Given the town's desire to have the trust assets professionally managed full-time in the State Retirement Benefit Trust Fund, the SRBTF, this article would designate the town treasurer as a custodian and trustee in order to fulfill, in order to further fulfill the requirements of the statute. The SBBTF investment history is 10.3 since its inception in 1031, 2011, far outweighs the returns the town is receiving on certificate of deposits. Following the transfer of the assets to the SRBTF, a higher rate of return to be utilized in our actualization studies to determine the town's OPEB unfunded liability, thus reducing the liability recorded on the town's financial statement.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. Requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. All opposed, please raise your pink cards? Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. I shall now entertain a motion to dissolve. The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of dissolving the annual town meeting, raise your pink cards? All those opposed? The motion passes. I declare the 2018 Annual Town Meeting dissolved.